You know if this relief invoice by vendors change any from the one Christine said earlier?
No, it's the same.
Yep, so, oh, you're right there.
How's that service?
Probably last week.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
I don't know how we signed that one. Well, shit.
We didn't base her in that line.
Emma got out in the cotton rain.
All right, so at six o'clock, we'll call the meeting of order. All those here, Swanson.
All right. Stuart Benton.
Thank you. And our agenda, we have some meetings to view and approve on the second and the sixteenth of October. Time for public comments under old business following that. Talk about the role. Updates on the role or at the highway department, dump truck at the highway department. A very brief update on the police department station. Administrator Lawrence. A discussion regarding with Chief Foss on the thirteenth of August. Under new business, we have cemetery budget. Discussion regarding the bridge aid and the highway block grants. We have separate hearing for that on twentieth of November. I have the highway supervisor report and we'll go into highway budget as well. We'll have a discussion regarding some need for special time meetings. Fear shock not load. Our R S A is raised on school nine. Any updates on the surrogate property in Bradley Lake? Updates on Lawrence Street Bridge Project? Health officer and death nomination. Other phone. Transfer station, there's a SWAT analysis, discussions about a new fire. Appointment of Jessica Rand, who clicks reaching planning commission. The late sign request from the public and the tax from Derek. And then our meeting scheduled. Okay, the end of. January twenty sixth. Signatures going around right now, there's an intent to cut. By my caring. Hunter Springs, Winter Sand, seventeen thousand, seventy-six dollars and fifty cents for two nights vacation. Tables manifest fourth at thirty-first of October, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Payroll manifest of ten thirty-one twenty-five, forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. G M I asphalt paving. For Boston Hill Road, you rode elbow pond of a hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. And then we'll go into a non-public session, R S A ninety-one dash. Eight four three two, see matters that may adversely affect reputation. Any other agenda items? All right, so let's move on to minutes of October second.
Those were revised. I had sent those out a couple of days ago. And that's not, we guys have to look at the revisions.
Yeah, I still talk about the October second meeting.
Yeah, so the only comment on the October second is there's initials there for elbow pond. It's N C P after Boston Hills and B H, if we could just expand that out so that people know what we're talking about.
Abbreviation.
The abbreviation, okay, it's just.
Did we not have to have the nonappropriation clause removed? Or was that being used?
No, it is a change.
Say it again?
There is a nonappropriation clause in the lease.
Okay, right, right, we changed the minutes before, so.
Right, okay.
That's what it was. It's wanted to be. The change down is hardest.
That's probably revision. Anything else on the October second measures?
No. So just update the abbreviations and then, okay, I can do that.
So motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then so the sixteenth of October.
I make a motion accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public comments. Public comments.
With me. I have two things I'd like to say, one is I'm thinking, what steps have been taken to collect outstanding four hundred thousand in overdue property taxes? Has the tax collector made any plans? Done anything? I mean, we're struggling with cash flow. And I'm really concerned about that.
It's actually, we're down to about two hundred and ninety thousand, which is not great, but.
Get out any taxes?
We're down to about two ninety.
Wow, you did a good job.
We're working.
Okay, thank you. I just, just because I worry when I know that it's cut to the. I just have a generic statement. Of course. I, I just wondering what you as a board feel that you reconvened this year? That was for the good of the public. Some things that you're proud of having done, because we're getting close to the end of the year. And I wonder what plans you guys have for something or some, some strategies or some improvements for next year?
Well, if they think about that for then our annual report.
So I will get an answer until.
Yeah.
Off the cuff, that's a pretty tough one though.
But I know it is, but, but what, but. I'm glad, I want you to think about it, because what if, I'm curious as to what you guys think? Was successful and how this was good.
We've made serious progress on fixing some road. Better see if I knew how we got.
And we've also done a lot of stuff with our. We want all those things, all our.
Policies and policies and procedures and job descriptions. So, but a more formal response to your question will have to wait till.
No, I just kind of wanted to jog everyone to get them thinking about it. And hopefully maybe we'll have some exciting things we could want to accomplish next year.
Maybe we should do the same thing with all of us.
That's absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, Jeff.
The first week of October, we, there was a meeting that. And we talked about budget and also the highway. Looking show with the highway dispatch and stuff, doing a great job. And I made a comment to the highway supervisor that. And I would fight over the pockets to do awesome job, a great start and everything, or getting some of those holes filled up some more important ones. And he mentioned that he'd run out of perm patch. So I actually asked him, I said, I asked him, I said, can someone, because he said the budget, there was no budget for any replacement, because unfortunately I didn't know. He was left with nothing. Pensions. But I said, can someone donate to the town? Some permit to help you out? You know, right to get ready for the winter season because of the concerns that I have, which unfortunately is my wife. Has about thoughtful condition going into winter and of course I'm going to listen to that every day. But anyways, he said yes. And he actually helped, I helped him out, he helped me out for finding out where to get some. I offered, I says, well, can I buy my business? Yes. Sent me onto, turned me onto a place where I could buy it. So I did that very next day, drove down, ordered a pallet, fifty bags of perm. Bodies. Two congestions, you know, I mean, whatever perm attached. Thirteen hundred dollars prepaid over my business, gave him the card, ordered it. It's going to have a delivery directly to Jeremy. And then. No problem, let it go by. And then I happened to be driving back, I think it was on the fifteenth, coming back from placing that, playing your business and ask. I'm like, geez, I never, they never did call me back to give me the final total once the delivery on it. So I called, I sent an email to Jeremy and then I was informed. By Jeremy. And then I called and talked to them over there. I was told by the selectman that we will pay for it instead, thank you, I don't know why, but the select would turn it down. So my question is, is what? Town ruling index, night item or something, whatever. As I mentioned, I said, thank you, I mentioned to Jeremy, he said, thank you, and I said, absolutely, I hope it helps you out with Plankville Road, Plains Road. To get it finished, because this one day does going to hell on the clouds. But what ruling in town states that a business cannot donate to the benefit of the town, especially for the roads? What line I said, and why I was not contacted? And what board meeting? That you guys all attend, because I didn't see on any agendas. That turn down. And say, no, we can't accept them. So what day was that meeting and when did you guys meet to turn that down and what board meeting was there?
So there's a couple of things, one, I don't believe that's an ordinance.
And it is.
So, yeah, however, we did have a board meeting and I can't tell you what date, time, looking forward to that, look back through the town.
Well, I did check the minutes, nineteen nothing to any of the minutes.
We did have within the last year, year and a half, one of our meetings, because we had some issues where other local businesses wanted to voluntarily do. And he said, no, that's not a good practice for us. It's not a good hygiene for us to, because that, because there's. There was a perception of a quid pro quo.
Town history has been accepting donations, they were retired by the police department.
Would you let me finish please?
Fireworks.
They had done that in the past, we made the decision, we would not do that going forward. I will have to find that in the net, so we'll find it in the net. I don't know if any of the rest of you recall that as well, but that's the.
It was one citizen, they turned down thirteen hundred dollars worth of donation to the town to help because we are so over that in taxes to start. Especially both of the roads, I mean, two different roads for two town lines. Now we sure look to know that and also why it wasn't noted. Go ahead, Les, I'd love to hear from you.
So I'll take my acknowledgement from the chair, not from you.
Except for one thing.
No, not except nothing. This is our meeting, not yours.
Keep this in mind. We pay for those seats, so respect the chair you're sitting, not personally.
Okay, but the conversation comes from the chair and not from the floor.
Nice to know, acknowledge that tonight, but not former meetings, go ahead.
Ongoing, it will be a thing. Trust me. The appearance of impropriety and buying special favors is what we're trying to avoid. Okay, and whether it's you or whether it's anybody else, quote unquote donating to us. Perhaps it's gravel from a particular gravel pit or particular loaning of a piece of equipment or whatever. The appearance of a, as the chair mentioned, a quid pro quo, buying influence is something we try to get away from. And so some people who would prefer to influence decision making and or garner favor would be giving. They would be currying favor from the board in that way, and we'd like to avoid that appearance.
Look, I can understand it, and I'm a little bit confused, because we give to the ladders, we give to the first door, they give to the town, they give to the fire department, we gave to the health department. We gave to the food pantry. But I can't give to the town for two different roads to get their path, help the gentleman out that needs a huge amount of help. To fix the roads. Okay, I understand, that's all I need to know, no one's had to be that kind.
All right, thank you. Other full of comments.
Sir, yes, Jeff Newcombe, Jeffrey Newcombe from Chase Hill Road. And my reason for being here tonight is to express my concerns with the. Directional change on the Maple Street railroad bridge going from changing it to one way. I, what I'm trying to find out is, was there a public hearing or any public? Opportunity for public input before that decision was made? I'm very disappointed in that. And I would like to see the bridge open back up to two-way traffic. It appears that there was no study done to see if there was any thing that could be any improvement that could be made there to help the situation. And I think, like Lord voted in haste. Whenever that was done, and I would like to see the, the bridge open back up and select Lord vote to open it back up and. Perhaps have a study done. See what improvements could be made to improve the situation. Before closing the bridge and hold a public hearing on it if that was. The way that the threat would still appeal that needs to go, but at least give the public an opportunity to speak that matters.
Thank you, Jeff. So there's. There are currently petitions that have been submitted. And a meeting on the twentieth, so not, so two weeks from tonight. So that will be on the agenda. And all of our select board meetings are public meetings. And so it was done in a public meeting and a vote taken at that time, that was four weeks ago on that. But we're going to take that under advisement and listen to our public caster's saying additional input at that point. So on the twentieth.
Yes, but my point being, I guess, is that Greg Moore did not hold the public hearing and hold a public hearing, hearing relative to that specific issue.
There is honoring, the, the select board under the R S As has the potential ability to sign the roads. To put ceilings on roads. To change and make that a one-way. That is fully within the purview of the select board. The select board meeting where that was held was a public meeting. We don't have to stop and say we're going to have a special public hearing about these topics. Whether it was right or wrong. Regardless, it was done in a legal way. Now, however, we are understanding this, that's a number of those. Residents. Both those who live along Tucker Mountain, Maple Street, Chase Hill, that whole surrounding area that have concerns about this and have put petitions gathered. There were fifty-five signatures that I'm there, that they're showing already, and they're coming on the twentieth, talking about it at that point. And I'd rather have a, spend a bunch more than setting that way, unless other select board members would like to, especially through them. And so we hear you, we know. We just want to do it under that settlement, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Count.
Chair, I would like to address the board and say, I don't know who this gentleman is. But people are willing to donate to the town. I think the select board needs to reconsider. That decision that was made long ago. And if somebody does want to donate, it should maybe be a disclosure. Or disclaimer, excuse me, saying that if you donate, this is understandable, there's no favorable, whatever. I just want the board to reconsider that because of the situation the town is in now. That was a very good donation and you can't look and get forcing them up. And if people, other people want to donate their time or their materials to help this town out. We should reconsider, so thank you.
Other comments?
I understand from reading on the Friends of Andover Facebook page that there are concerns in the town about. Camper, camps. Camper vans and stuff are these set up on power lines. In town and I understand Jim Delaney is aware of that. And I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, is a matter for the entire select board to consider and. Have a member of the conservation commission back and advise of the camp setup on. Agony Hill Road is the wetlands that are there, so where water would go to. To have, if they're dumping gray or black water, is a prime wetland. A, the third highest ranked prime wetland. Out of twenty-six in Andover. And so normally, any sort of impacts on that would go through very stringent measures. At the state level, and if there is any impacts that are visible, you can always ask the, it's a state matter, so we can invite D S to come and inspect.
Thanks. Thanks. And yes, we are, yeah. Any other thoughts? I can move on to old business under the highway department, the roller. Les.
Yeah, these, these two, these first two items right here, the roller and the dump truck were at my request to be on the agenda. Back in. September. The disposition of these two pieces of equipment was decided. And I would just like to see where we stand with that, what the next steps would be, and to set a date by which they. Come to resolution, because it's going to snow soon and they're going to be underfoot. They are simply pieces of equipment we can't use and don't use. So my inquiry is, where do we stand?
Don or Jeremy, do you have any updates on?
I don't have an update. I know Jeremy would like to, I think you actually talked to a scrapper on the roller and the tires were part of the concern. How we would dispose of the rubber, but the metal, I think we could scrap. And the truck, we could park that by the side of the road with a for sale sign on it and see if anybody calls. And if we don't get any hits, we can take it to the state auction.
Did we post that as for sale, what a minimum, or?
We have not, we, we were talking to someone that had expressed interest, but then they, they backed out and then that was kind of last we, we did anything with it.
You can certainly, I'll put that on marketplace or text list or something as well as put it out by the street and.
The fire department is going to have an auction company do their fire truck that they're getting rid of. I know that guy, he used to live in Danbury and we dealt with him. And he had called me yesterday and said he would go down and look at it and we could go that route. We could put up whatever we want for a minimum and we don't sell, we don't have to accept it, but he is like worldwide. That company, I forget the name of it, but a bunch of towns around him, he was, I mean, he's a local. And that was, that was presented to me yesterday and I didn't have a chance to get back, I was up in Huffington looking at the dump truck when he called yesterday.
You know when that auction is, Jeremy?
It's online, we could do it whenever.
Yeah.
Like, it's like, you would do it like, say we tell them, yeah, we want to do it, he takes the pictures, he does all the work. And it could be like for December, like it's all the time, it's not like a certain, like we don't have to wait, like a lot of people. The state auction isn't always the best option anymore.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, you're right, yeah.
I mean.
I think you should probably try like along the street, you know, give that like a couple of weeks and then, you know, if we don't get any bites and then reach out to the auction guy.
Yeah, I mean, I could have him come take the pictures and, you know, he can, you know, say, you know, what do you think we should put on there? I know what you're expecting to get off, but we've got to be realistic. We're not going to get that money back, most likely, but.
I mean, we'll get more though if we can private sell it, you know, it's just like taking a car to the dealer when you trade in, you know, because he's got to get his.
Town, he only does a little tiny bit, like a regular person would be more, but municipalities, it's very little that they get out of that.
Well, certainly investigated, yeah.
And go both steps.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Put it on the side of the road with a sign on it for sale and also posted as soon as possible on the auction site.
Yeah, if you give me some stats on it, I could do the Facebook posting, the Facebook marketplace posting or the. Texas posting, I don't mind, put that together, but you'd have to give me some of the stats.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I only.
What you know, I mean, mileage, you know, the kind, that kind of stuff. Yes.
Down there.
So is it real, realistic to expect we can have this disposed of by Christmas? That'd be nice.
So, yeah. Yeah, well, the auction, you definitely could, and he may even know people that might even want it.
All right, yeah, I didn't have time to get back to them yesterday, you know, it's just been busy, very busy and.
That one was a dump truck.
As long as, as long as it gets out from underfoot before it snow, I'm putting that Christmas in my notes.
The roller.
I mean, the roller, you already gave me permission to destroy. Oh, and said he was trying to get something else, so I mean.
Was interested, but he backed out because of businesses that's slow, so.
Yeah, so maybe now just.
However, that can get.
Whatever we got to do, we got to dismount the tires or chop them up or pay for them to go with it, whatever.
We got a great transfer station in town.
You get away, you get away, we're going to pay for the tires, hopefully at the other dawn, matter what we go.
I was joking.
In this, excuse me.
You need a couple planters.
Okay. I did, I want to check with Steve, the fire department also, I sent him a text message to him, it's a website of general. They specialize in town equipment and fire apparatus. Put it on that website.
I don't want to, that guy, I think, might be the guy I'm talking about, I can't remember his.
They have it between five to ten times the value, because they sell to other small towns for other department, even though, like for instance, our fire truck was outdated. They've other fire department, they apply that at their second, third for like. Public fire stations and stuff.
Oh, yeah, they totally sold for as much as a hundred thousand dollars versus us getting rid of ours for twelve thousand. Yeah, maybe something, get your Steve, he's got the information.
Great, thank you. Anything else on that last?
No, that's good, thank you.
Okay, next item is the new police department station update, so the last meeting that we, we scheduled ended up. We had to cancel it and I've already talked to the chief about rescheduling that, we. As in we, it's Charlie himself and chief sitting down on some onion skin going over the existing plans that we have from bone and architects. To start to mark that up and see if there, what we can do for volume engineering to reduce the scale, the cost. And then also reach out to organizations such as Preferred Builders, which is a subset of look at how you. Design and what type of pricing maybe it was for a three fan. Now, what we really want to do is tighten up the numbers so that we have that as part of an article going forward at the town meeting. Steve, that's pretty much where we stand.
Appreciate it. I mean, well, you know, for this coming town meeting.
Depends on how much it is and what else we have on the, you know. Last.
The. At town meeting last year, we put thirty thousand into a C R F for this.
Yes.
Project, has any of that money been excluded? Or do we have that money in that C R F still?
I believe we used a small portion of it to finish up the bone and.
Yeah, we didn't want to pursue it with bone and because you didn't have further fees for designing.
There is still some of.
Yeah, there's still some ghost touches, yes. I don't, I don't know if the free balance is in there right now, but. It's still close to the.
I know that. I feel that question's going to get asked at town meeting. What do you do with the money in that C R F?
Still encouraged for the project.
Yeah, that's a non-lapse.
Well, non-lapse, okay. I missed that, see, it pays to be the new guy, I can claim I didn't know.
Questions?
You can be down there and get on.
They are all of them, okay.
That was going to be D S.
Just wait, wait.
Twenty-four later, she has to give me back this.
Playing music? It's all. A little jeopardy here.
Sorry, I talked to chief at the time, probably not a Friday, stood out.
Yeah, whatever.
Probably can't get away with Fridays.
We'll continue on wherever you can come up with and leave, just let us know.
I will, sorry.
Yeah, administrative inspection warrants.
So I put that on there just as a reminder that tonight, a little bit later on, we're going to, I believe formally. Everybody's already signed up on it, so formally recognize. Jim as a health officer and so this paper will be submitted to the state now. And he'll be granted provisional health officer. Credentials. It's one year to complete the training, but again, provisionally can serve as a health officer and then. As a health officer, it is within the legal rights to walk up, if you have probable cause, to walk up and knock on a door. Have a conversation with the resident of the property. If they allow you to enter the home, wonderful, if they say, no, thank you. At that point, we would then go and get the administrative inspection warrant is what it's called and go through that process and then you would. You would need, you would need an affidavit and probable cause, but it's generally a pretty easy process to get that, but we. That we don't necessarily need an administrative inspection warrant as the first step. That was all.
The rules on the. Health officer in situations like this is that even if our property is posted. The health officer can go on the property, check for pollution, water and so forth. The only thing he cannot do is go into private restaurants. And he can't be kicked off the property while he's doing his.
So angel private restaurants, that is, you can't enter, you can go on the grounds, you can't enter.
Okay.
Sorry, I've been doing my homework.
Again. You ready for the test? Part of that community. It's on Jesse, this goes back to your.
Mark, who ran those warrants? They were just. Who, who ran the judge district court? District court.
You gotta get a court.
Now, that's a separate process from the administrative enforcement policies which we're trying to craft in a whole different range. Those are two different focuses, one for the planning board to be using and. And something a lot less than an injunctive relief measure. So that's an administrative in-house thing, so those are two different mechanisms.
All right, thank you. Meeting with Chief Foss?
So Andrew, our chief of the E M S department. At the meeting where he presented his budget, the select board asked if he could set up a meeting with Chief Foss, Chief Foss is Franklin. He could set up a meeting with the chief boss, uh, chief boss is Franklin. And, uh, uh, November thirteenth at six P M, if the select board members are available, uh, that was. The chief's earliest date to meet, so that's next, that's the week, we come tonight. It would be. If, yeah, if they want to have it. I think, uh, especially being on the budget committee, that would be good.
Did you say six or six thirty?
Six P M.
Six P M, thank you.
All, all, all year, excellent.
Let's just, uh, keep that going to that subject, let's not let that evening expand forever. It always had, yes, it could.
I don't know where you get that feeling, Charlie, I don't know.
Great, thank you. All right, on to new business, cemetery budget, my secretary of the cemetery trust funds, they are.
Did Alita give you a copy of? Do you want me to just go ahead or you want to see the?
Is it complicated? Will we be able to follow along? I didn't think so.
It's not complicated. So this year, I'll, just to get started, this year our total budget before the cemetery. Is fifty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy seven. That's pretty much on the line with what it's been in the past, it's a little bit higher. I go back two years ago, which was fifty one thousand, two hundred and ninety four. The only difference in this cemetery budget is under our projects, which we took miscellaneous and projects combined them together. And we're starting to plan for the next, next year and the year after for a couple of projects. Uh, which makes it a little bit higher than usual. And what the cemetery trustees would like to do is. Reserve ten thousand out of our trust funds to put towards this budget. So the budget we'd be asking the town to approve would actually be forty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy seven. We just feel that, um, one of our big projects is replacing the fencing on Row. Um, cemetery up on Flag Hill Road is the small one. I've only had a over the telephone call for replacement of fence, we asked for all four sides and I think the price without a gauge was over twenty three thousand dollars. So our thought was, we feel that what we'd like to do is just replace the two sides. That most people see, which would cut that amount in half. And we're gonna put half aside in twenty six and then the other half in twenty seven and replaces them. So we can find a this slowly work up to that rather than, you know, taking the town with or our own budget with a great big, uh.
Is that the one at the top of the hill of Flag Hill, very end, right, of, of end of her side?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so we're, in our mind, we're putting about sixty five hundred dollars towards that project, which will be done in twenty seven. We are trying to get some quotes on removing some trees and doing some trimming in some of the cemeteries that, uh, in order to protect the property. We usually typically spend, we've been spending about two thousand dollars for great stone cleaning supplies. We're gonna be painting a couple of fences and re-staining the pump house and it all basically comes up. That particular projects and miscellaneous comes to about six, sixteen thousand, five hundred.
Can you explain why last year the budget was so low for?
I guess, that's because when we were here, the decision was made that our mowing the.
Also, the mowing would be.
Went into the, uh.
And so now the mowing is back.
So now it looks like we are, we have a budget.
Cemetery labor is actually mowing. Thank you. Contracted mowing with.
Well, the actual, uh, in the, our report will be fifty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy.
That's what we're thinking, planning on spending or close to spending, uh, next year. But we will use ten thousand of our funds because they do need those funds that have been sitting in the trust funds for. Forever and nobody's used them and we think it's time we, and it's helpful to the town if we start pulling some of that out and using it, some of our. Cemetery projects, it just makes sense.
So the number of the town budget would be forty, forty nine then, that, so you're gonna spend fifty nine, but.
Kind of that's coming from here.
The town, the town, thirty nine.
So the budget.
You have to list it as an expense or you can't spend it, right? So it's gonna show all fifty nine.
Well, that all. The capital reserve account, we expense it to the capital reserve account outside of the general fund, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, if you don't show the expending, you can't, even though you have revenue offset and you have to.
It's gonna be lowered by that, so I know what you're saying though, but it's, it's just gonna show in a different area.
This is, this is what we're gonna ask to raise and appropriate is typically what we see the budget as, so if we're not raising or appropriating.
Right.
All fifty nine thousand.
Could be forty nine thousand.
And again, ex- expending from a capital reserve fund or ETF, that's, that's what those are set up for, so it's. You don't have to, operating budget, that's not like an operating budget.
Right.
So is that ETF or is it a CRF?
Probably a CRF, I would presume, but it doesn't, it really doesn't make a difference.
Is our motion accept the budget?
I make a motion, we accept cemetery budget.
I'll second.
So on all the point, I'm gonna accuse myself as cemetery section and also a known straight of the, uh. Sure, you do? So all those in favor? Those. Very, thank you. All right, bridge aid and highway block grasses, we have a meeting scheduled for the twentieth?
Correct, we have a public hearing scheduled for the, this, at, I believe we said. Five or five thirty on November twentieth, just to have the public hearing, I think we said five. To, to start the public hearing, this evening, the discussion was to say. What are we going to present? What's our plan that we're going to present at that public hearing? So I emailed out. Some information earlier today, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see that, but the. Overall balance is a hundred and sixty four thousand and, and something of dollars that can be used towards. A maintenance of roads, bits of bridges and most exciting purchases of equipment. Um, so. I kind of left it at that and then Alita and I are here to kind of hopefully feel any questions, but, um.
I also saw that we can use that to offset the oil and tanners.
Correct.
Designed fees, our portion of them on Lawrence Street.
Correct.
I think that's a good choice, yeah.
Other thoughts?
I personally would like to see us. Use that money in, in equipment purchase. In order that our operating budget for next year can reflect. A little closer to the same level of what we had this year. Meaning that, so let's say we take one of the leases, say for the F six hundred. And buy it off, be done with. Get rid of the, the lease for the backhoe, buy that out. And that way, when the freight liner comes in and shows on the operating budget, for the following year, we only financing one truck. And that the operating budget, the money that we have here will more than satisfy a couple of those leases and get them off the books. For my money, I think it would be a better way to spend, to put it into the trucks. Recognizing the money we get back from the Lawrence Street Bridge at eighty percent is a reasonable investment to come out of the tan. When it comes time to have to pay that and we get that money back. The longer we go with the leases, the less return we get on our money. And I think it's a better way to buy off those leases, better use of the money to buy off the leases than it is. To continue to pay the lease and use or use the money for the, for the bridge. For the oil and tanner expenses.
There's certainly debt service on that that you have to take into account, right? So, I mean, we're paying interest on the lease.
Right.
So, uh, and we're not on the, I mean, we're taking a tan, so we're paying interest on a tan, but that's short term.
Short term, a bunch of that money comes back to us at eighty percent too.
Right.
So.
The oil and tanner.
The oil and tanner, right.
So for me, I, I would, you know, having seen this only just a couple of hours ago, for me, it makes more sense to. Buy one truck, just like we did with the F three fifty. Get that off the operating budget and. I think it's a better way to leverage our money.
Any of it's.
And it's, it's one less thing we have to go to the town meeting with as well, if we're only asking for one new lease. And so our current lease service, debt service is about eighty thousand per year, if we. Add the two new trucks, F six hundred and the freight liner. That would be an additional eighty thousand that we would be asking for at town meeting, uh, lease service line, but to Les' point. The freight liner lease is about forty thousand, so it's about half, um, of the, of the overall eighty thousand that we would be asking for, but. That would be one less thing we would have to go in front of town meeting with. The other. Uh, project that I wanted to make sure we didn't get forgotten about was the, the steel beam rental. Payment, uh, for the Sealyville Bog Bridge, we could potentially use some of that money to. Buy our own beam or possibly find the gradients and see if we could just. Do more of a long-term buyout and that, that would be about, it's about twelve thousand or it is twelve thousand dollar per year, um.
To rent it, right?
To rent it, yes, sir.
What would you do with that? Forty feet, yeah.
I don't know how much that beam would be.
Second chunk.
Definitely call and find out.
What we'd have. For future use.
And we could even sell it back to the gradients if. Uh, but that was just one other, one other thought, but like from a cash flow standpoint. Uh, we really, really do need to spend this hundred, the auditors are already honest about it. Uh, we, we got a preliminary draft of our twenty twenty five audit already, which was, which was great, uh, but they're, they are. That's why that letter exists is because they were already talking to us about this, is this money has been, um. In the unanticipated revenue, uh, on that, on that side of the books for, uh, going on.
You had so many highway projects, I'm surprised we haven't just spent this.
I think it literally, I think it just sort of got forgotten about.
We were, we were talking about doing Elbow Pond, using the money for that, for Elbow Pond, um, the bridge there. Um, and also, uh, I can't remember the road, but there was another bridge in town that needed repair also, and we were talking about doing that one as well.
So. We're, we're in line for another state. Uh, bridge projects, again, I think that right now was Elbow Pond was what we had on the books, but. We can, I don't know who was in the meeting with Joseph, not too many weeks ago, but he was saying that. You know, if there was another bridge that was, uh, higher priority, we could. The state's pretty forgiving as far as if we, oh, we just, we changed our mind, we don't want to use that bridge, we want to use it on this other bridge instead. Uh, but just like Lawrence Street, we're in line for another bridge project, that's where, we're in the queue for that, so. Keep, keep that in mind as well.
Biolitics might have some information on that, no?
No, bridge, not on bridges, um, it, that's really just surface, uh, inspections from oil and tanner is really what you need to go by.
Big bridge reports. Physically going and looking at that also.
Well, which is what oil and tanner does as well.
Yeah.
Back to Les' comment, though, how much do we owe on the P six hundred? How much do we?
On the F six hundred?
Like a hundred and eight or a hundred?
It was a hundred and five thousand, nine hundred dollars, I believe was the, uh, all in, uh, price. And we've already made one lease payment and I believe we have one coming up next week on that one already.
Yes, we have one due tomorrow.
So we, we're probably down around a hundred K that we owe on that truck right now.
What do we owe on other equipment?
About, not quite eighty for the backhoe and the C V's.
What's the rate on all these pieces of equipment?
The new, I don't know on the backhoe and the C V's, but on the new trucks, it was what, five point nine nine?
I wonder what the, the older pieces. They might have had better deal, they might have.
They were the same company, so they're probably in the same area.
Probably about the same. Can't be my floor.
But if, if the town is gracious enough to consent to the. Ongoing lease for the freight liner, when that shows up in the lease line of the operating budget for twenty six. Would be good.
That would be to twenty seven, so this year.
Twenty seven, sorry, but it would be nice if that didn't show either a C V payment or a. Backhoe payment or whatever, we reduce that line considerably.
Right.
Yeah, I would retire some of those old leases, buy the six hundred. And then when it comes in twenty seven, we're just like, just transitioning that money right into the operating.
I think we can do both, I think with that amount of money, I think we could. Get very, very close to paying off our current leases on the backhoe and the C V's. And purchasing the F six hundred outright to, today, I think we'd be very close.
This is working for me.
So a hundred and sixty four thousand, you're saying we have a hundred and then we're saying eighty, so. Thousand difference, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We'd be, like I said, we'd be close, but.
Right, I mean, I think the priority, I, I mean, we, I think we do last is that we should pay off the old leases. And then apply what remains towards the six hundred. And, yeah, maybe we end up with a lease for twenty K or whatever's left.
It's not gonna really help though, is it?
That might.
We'll have to talk to the leasing company on that, I, that.
See, and then you still have to take two options to the town meeting to get two, two lease agreements.
Right.
We're trying to eliminate that dynamic.
It's not, it's not that much though, you know, first one.
Right, but the C V payments aren't that much either, they're not nearly what the, what the six hundred payment is.
Right, I realize that.
So buy that outright, retire.
No, sir, we have to have a hearing on the twentieth, that'll be the public hearing, so tonight we were hoping to make a decision as far as what we're going to present.
Good to have the numbers in front of us for the leases, is that what you're trying to look up?
Do you want me to go get the lease?
Let's look at the amount remaining on, on the equipments that we have, right?
Should wear your roller skates tonight.
Not to add another reason, but. I feel like we're shooting from the head. I mean, I know, Les, I think you, you've got some good thoughts on this, but. The rest was trying to figure out, because in our arms we're out, so rather than not just say, oh, yeah, that's it, that's the only. Yeah. Yeah, the meeting, we just brought the box, this goes to Charles, but we don't want to expand, the meeting with chief boss. Doesn't make sense to say, you know what, we're gonna take another hour after that and have discussion office about these items.
I think we really need to have that time.
And we're allowed to send up. I mean, anyway, it's a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars you're gonna spend on highway projects.
But we need to go into the public hearing. So, none of those, people think about it for the next. Send some thoughts to Dawn on that, blind drive everyone else.
Oh, it was, I thought it was a break, because she was.
Meetings are long enough.
Thoughts on the, uh, was it the thirteenth? Spend that meeting out enough, even though we didn't want to.
I, I think we need to. There's no way we can make that decision tonight and not have everything in front of us.
Right.
Specifically, what can I bring to the meeting on?
Before, we need it in the before, it's the thing, and this is kind of the problem, is that this stuff pops up. I mean, I know, I realize this is just someone came up today, but we need material in advance to kind of digest this and.
So we need the, the price that's left on the six hundred. We need the two C V lease numbers. Then the backhoe number. And then we have these numbers in front of us and then we can do the math ourselves.
The other, that we've heard past out, there's what's. The other, that we've heard past out, there's what's the, what's the I beam cost?
What the I beam costs, and we should also look at the prices of what the Elbow Pond was gonna cost and. Um, I can't remember any of the other road.
Do we have a proposal for Elbow Pond?
We got, I think we did have one for that.
Oh, for the bridge, you're saying?
I would like to be included in that.
Yes.
I mean, included in what we're gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
This is the twenty three, the schedule.
Okay.
The twenty one and the backhoe.
Oh, you can watch out.
The nice thing is this information does have right on cover sheet what the purchase option price is, so we will have that specific for that, those dates.
Could we have that information on those three vehicles for making coffee?
I'll send them out to you guys tomorrow.
That'd be great.
And is there any other things that that we're paying on besides just those?
For leases?
But any type of lease during like that?
The backhoe, backhoe and the two internationals.
Okay.
We, we also have, remember the flag hole project where we had funds set aside for that that we then. Used for Boston Hill and for Elbow Pond.
Correct.
Put the money towards that, I mean, that is, any highway project of any sorts.
I've been talking to a lot of residents about the possibility of us floating a bond. For the work on all the town roads, and I've gotten positive results from everybody I've talked to.
That's another profession.
Just floating out there.
Yep, alright, so we're gonna discuss this on the thirteenth.
Yeah.
If you have other thoughts. Something comes to you, like you're driving home, you're in the shower or something, I wish I'd mentioned this.
Give it to Dawn.
Send an email to Dawn, blind copy the rest of us, so it doesn't become a discussion. I'm unaware of it ahead of time, so when we sit down on the thirteenth, try and be factual. Yeah, so we should know the financial piece, what are the risks involved with whatever choices we make? What are the unintended, possible unintended consequences of any of those decisions that we make? Are there other parties, third parties that may affect as well? Just the most simple business decision thoughts, but having, be going through those in your mind ahead of time. So with me, we can drive to a series of solutions, makes sense?
Are you finding that possible to be?
Yes.
That you're gonna take that one?
Yeah, great. Alright. Um, highway supervisor report and budget.
Have a board.
Mentioned working on the roads, bringing, getting the rest of the jobs ready. Yeah. I've had to really put a lot together. The information that Dawn put together that I sent you guys, that was our discussion on what we submitted all the budget, we were working.
I haven't seen the budget.
Good morning, yeah, yeah, it's just a lot of comments.
Actually.
Do you want a copy?
Yeah. So, are you done with your supervisory report? Just some, some good news, the freightliner is ready early. And Jeremy's already gone up and looked at it, they were gonna make a couple of final tweaks to it, but the freightliner is ready. And we've been in contact with the leasing company and move that up for delivery. Hopefully, next week even, so we'll, we'll get moving on that, so that was exciting and unexpected.
Okay, um. Trying to figure out the best way to say this, this is not what I expected. I asked, what would it take, what would we have to not do? We had a twenty percent less than this, ten percent less than this, just handing this out and saying, well, that's all we got. Is not an answer. So, what are we not going to do? If we say, you know what, you don't get eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, you get six hundred thousand dollars. Or your flat line, you get five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What's not gonna get done?
I think we asked for a list of stuff that's.
I don't know, I don't have an answer for it, sir, I have no idea, I have no idea. I, I sent you all an email with my thoughts on. You know, we have to do all of this stuff, but I, I can't tell you what culverts may or may not get replaced. I can't tell you how much full patch we may or may not need to put out, or hot patch we may or may need to put out. But we would have to take a little bit out of each one. Um, you know, we can. Potentially save a little money in H D labor as far as if we don't do raises for the workers. Or the supervisor, um, that would be one area, that's a, that's low hanging fruit, but as far as named projects. Uh, particularly of the paving variety, black hole has been the one that we've talked about. And so if we don't want to do black hole, that would be um an option. But most of that was gonna be in the C R F anyway, so just less of. What you see on this budget is what would happen. Um, we made a huge error going backwards in twenty twenty five, that was, that was a huge error. And, and now we're paying for it.
Can you explain going backwards, Dawn?
Going from a twenty twenty four budget of. Uh, seven hundred and nine thousand down to a six hundred and twenty six thousand budget?
Yeah, but in reality, that budget, they move money around.
Into a C R F.
So they took a hundred thousand dollars out of the highway department budget to lower the cost and make it look good, and they took that hundred thousand dollars. And put it in the C R L. So in reality, that money wasn't taken out the budget, it was just moved someplace else. Just doesn't show up that way here, because it's a.
I think it's a lot of numbers.
Yes, just back what we learned about.
I'd rather see the money go out of the C R F back into the budget where it actually shows actual instead of.
It, it, it is some, it's some logic to it though, because you can save the money. Well, I mean, it, it's, it's a balance, it's, it's definitely balanced.
So that was sort of to my point about retiring the lease line. That if you retire that to closer to zero, then your operating budget gets back under seven hundred and whatever.
Maybe take eighty thousand dollars away from it.
Against the seven hundred.
I mean, that's not the end of the world, I mean, it's not the solution to the problem, but that was part of my reasoning. To suggest we do it that way.
I understand we can't do everything, but suggesting flatlining when we're already in a hole. Trying to make progress is not gonna be beneficial. Normal ten, twelve percent is a normal increase in highway department, just to keep up with the costs. Of the filters, the cutmaches, the tires. Yeah, I wouldn't look at last year, we went back and looked at, I think it was twenty four. To now, because last year, I don't know what happened, but it was not good, and obviously I didn't have any thing to work with when I came here. What was presented is boss to operate a highway department effectively. And be able to do, have money to do the projects that we know about, not to mention the projects that are gonna come up that we have to do, that we don't have a choice to do. Well, that's one of the reasons why I'm recommending that we look at a bond, because for years, and I, I have to agree with you, it's, it's scary. But I can go back to John, all we've been doing all the years is putting a Band-Aid on a problem. This right here is not even gonna, it's, this is, is all it is is Band-Aid, and that's why I'm gonna recommend that we put in a bond. For a certain amount of money to bring all the roads up to par, so when you get out, you can have a clean slate to start working.
That comes up separately in the C R F, just as we did this last year.
Yeah.
Two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, twenty eighty eight thousand dollars in the C R F.
Yep.
For roadwork, so that we brought these numbers down. I anticipate that we'll have a lot of, a lot of more. Roadwork funds.
Absolutely.
And maybe that can absorb some of this, what I'm done and I talked about, is that a, do we? Yeah, we'll be specific on some of those, except just January.
I, I, but this number here isn't any paving projects.
No, this, this is the twenty three percent increase last year. So there would be some money in there for some short.
Small. But it's not, not.
A couple of the short streets, but then.
Not the stuff that Jim's talking about with the bond.
Out of capital reserve, I guess is how you guys do it here. Yeah.
So the, the highway department maintenance and equipment repair, you get sixty five thousand, well, that's. Yeah, sixty five thousand in there. Um, which to me, with new equipment and stuff, I don't think you're gonna have that much repair, should have that.
It's not, yes, repairs, it would be filters, service. When they have issues, that's not covered, which not everything is covered under warranties. They have computers, we can't work on any of that stuff that has computers. It costs a lot of money to send anything out, and, and the two problem trucks are still gonna be here for a while, those are eating up most of the money. And they're, one is barely going and the other one's been in the shop, so those, we still have to use them when they're here. And even when we pay off the leases, we don't have any money to change the vehicle out, so we're still gonna have it for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, for, for the amount of roads we have, equipment we have to maintain, that is a very reasonable. Number to even try to do that with that amount of money. And we're doing everything that we can do. With the very limited equipment that we have to even work on trucks. See on that very minimums, we're trying to trickle stuff in a little bit at a time. Supplies and tools and. If, if we were to take and make all our own sand with the materials that we actually have on our pit, you could cut down your sand. Not a lot, I would say that that. Didn't pan out as well as I hoped this year. That's because of the fact that you started so late, and it wasn't your fault. But the reason we bought that whole pit to start with was because we had the resources there to make our own product. And there's plenty of sand, all we gotta do is get the screener and everything to do it, we didn't have time to make it. But you paid eighteen thousand dollars to untune the sand that we could have made right here.
So I'm just. For fifteen thousand, I mean, it, it.
It was seventeen thousand, I think I said.
Right, seventeen to untune, and it would cost us fifteen to make it, so yes, we could save.
A little bit, not a lot, and we would strip every single bit of our property. Well, that's what we bought it for, Jeremy, so we could use the materials to make a product. Oh, excuse, do it. Rotate it so that we're not, save that for some year if we're really dire straits, so we don't have any money.
No, but the problem is, we're not a rich town.
Right.
Right, we're an old town, and a lot of people in town are on a fixed income. And right now, the tax increase that we had last year has really put people on a bind. And so we need our budget as flat as we can, now, a lot of our budget is the school, but the school is very much aware of that. And they're trying to come in with just like a one or two percent increase. We as a town need to be shooting for that same one or two percent increase. To have twenty four, twenty seven percent increase in highway, it means that's gotta come from someplace else. And that's the biggest item in our budget, so that means it's gotta come from a lot of other places to try to make that up. And I think the way we gotta look at this is you gotta say, this would be great, this is what we really need. But it's not what we as a town can afford right now, so if we had a number of seven twenty five, seven, whatever. And I had to work backwards from that, what could I, what could I cut to get that to that seven forty number? And I think that might be an approach that would help here, because we just don't have it. I mean, we're all in agreement that we'd love to give you the money and say, let's do it, you know, the roads need repair, everybody likes the roads. But the town can't afford it, that's the problem.
Can we go line by line, so supervisor salary, keep it flat at eighty five or ninety?
Well, I'm suggesting that we don't go line by line, that we let Jeremy kind of work up a number himself and.
We, we have, that's the, that's the thing, this is, this is the best we could come up with, so now we're turning to the select board, we've already been to the budget committee. And the budget committee didn't seem to have too much issue with it, so now, you know, I work for the select board, so not the budget committee. So what, what do you guys want, Les?
Let's, let's start, you can highlight two of these here, once highway supervisor, then in the position last year. Why nine percent increase? Why wouldn't we go to, you have, there are no increases until you work a year in a position. In general, not just this one, but in general, if someone got hired for a position, is that right? That shouldn't automatically just kick up.
There, there would be two and a half or whatever the. But then the merit wouldn't kick in until you've been here a year.
I think that we discussed this back when we hired Jeremy, that we were gonna start him off at a certain amount of money due to the fact it was so late in the season. And we said that we would raise it up to that point.
No, no, we never said that.
We, I thought we did, but. That, what was discussed? I must say, you know, we, it's, you know, it's a discussion, but.
The next couple lines are flat, plow and sanding, we're, we're planning on having. Um, Mr. Jim Reed plow for us this year, he started late in the last year, if, if we wanna. Cut that and, and try to survive with.
What's his contract, Dawn, do you know?
He's, he's, it's hourly. We don't know. The sand, sand and gravel, um, you know, that shows a jump because our prior. Highway supervisor didn't put out sand last year, he only put out salt, so, you know, yeah, we're gonna put out more sand next year, but. To Jim's point.
But we look at twenty three and we look at twenty four.
Right.
And our prior supervisor was in here, and our budget was thirty, and then twenty three, you spent ninety seven hundred.
Right.
And at twenty four, our budget was twenty, we spent nineteen thousand. And so, okay, our budget last year was fifteen, and we only spent eighty six, but the jump to eighty grand. Is a big jump from that kind of twenty one.
That's what I'm saying.
That eighty six doesn't represent the sand, the, you know, add seventeen at least to that number.
That's still a long way from eighty thousand.
That's thirty two.
So I'm, we still have probably three thousand worth, yeah, with the gravel sitting over in the fifth and.
As I recall, the budget committee hearing, that standing gravel, not only stand for. Nice to snow, it's also gravel for road.
He put it into one.
Right, that's what Roland was just saying.
Couple years ago, we, we bought, you know, the gravel that we're talking about over at the transfer station. Um, you know.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars worth, so that gets you pretty close to eighty thousand. I don't know where it showed up in the operating budget that year that we did, but, um, you know.
And, I mean, you guys weren't here, but we did have a discussion about that, why would we be purchasing gravel versus. Not using that as a primary ground, we tried and it was nothing but garbage and mud, five, six inches of mud, the next happened. Five, six inches of mud the next afternoon. When we used that on the flat road. I can imagine putting that on my hill and the phone, we bring it off the hook because it's poor material. It's unfortunate that it was not made to spec and not very good quality at all.
What was the test results on that that we got back?
It was lacking in fines.
They're never gonna add it, they talked about adding it.
There's a lot of clay in it.
Actually, the fines are like heavy, so one of the.
Yeah, there's, there's one of that.
See, this is the problem, yeah. We were told by the previous road agent that we couldn't put the material down because it wouldn't stick together. Basically. And now we're hearing that it's full of clay and we can't use it because it sticks together too well and when it gets wet, there's the mud.
It did, we took pictures of it, it was a mess.
I hate to see three thousand yards of material sitting there that we paid for already just sitting there.
We're mixing it in with better material, but we still have to have something else with it. Putting it out plain is, and we can use it for culverts, but not as a primary gravel to put out on the roads by itself. That would be calling, causing myself a million more headaches than there is already. We did it on a short side flat road and that's what happened. Which is why the money's in there to buy the better material. Or don't buy it and then we can just deal with all the headaches every day of money growths.
I believe it first time.
No, but not this time of year.
No.
That's what happened the other day.
I think you could reduce that line item by thirty thousand dollars and say, live with it.
I think so too.
I, if you put fifty thousand on that line. And some of these other lines that I've just highlighted, we can get down to six sixty five pretty easy.
What are the other lines that you're looking at?
Well, we're gonna retire, I, I would say retire the leasing line. There's an easy eighty right there. And I also don't, I, I, I'm in agreement with Roland that. We're not gonna spend sixty five thousand dollars on equipment and maintenance and repairs.
Well, we will have.
And you could easily reduce that line by. By twenty thousand.
Thousand, something like that, forty five thousand.
Easily.
Forty four.
So we pull the leasing line out, but we've got this other lease. Are we saying that we're not gonna carry that lease?
But that's gonna go into capital reserve.
Well, it's, it's gonna be a warrant article.
A warrant.
And then twenty twenty seven, depending on how we write the warrant, we may, leasing may come back into the picture in twenty twenty seven. Or we could go back to town meeting again and say, does the town wish to continue this lease? So, well, we don't know about the leasing yet because.
Still, whether, okay, whether it goes here or whether it goes in a separate thing, you're still paying that amount of money for.
But again, this is operating budget and this is what we have to raise and appropriate for the, the bottom line budget for the municipality. So that's, that's why these numbers are important.
Yeah.
And and again, to Jim's point earlier, yeah, we did some creative accounting last year and, and moved money out of the operating budget. But we shuffled it into a capital reserve fund, that's.
But my, my point is, if we're gonna be paying for the, the lease out of capital reserve fund or whatever, because it passes as a warrant article, then this budget. Theoretically, should reflect that much less. Because bottom line, the taxpayers are still paying eighty thousand dollars for our truck for the highway department.
Correct.
So whether you're paying through a CRF or whether you're paying through a higher budget, that amount has to be the same.
One other thing that we had discussed as far as if we want to. If, if we wanna play with the operating budget, if we, if we want to get. In the weeds at town meeting. And the select board wants to. Leave it up to the legislative body to. Manage the prudential affairs, then we could literally say. Have a warrant article for paving black hole roads. Does the town vote to raise and appropriate a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to pave like the sections of that black hole roads?
Well, but you don't have that, that's not in here now.
I know, that's not in here, but we could, we could, we could. We could make each of these things, potentially you could make those all warrants and then, you know, we roll the dice on that, but.
That's not our intent. That's not what we're talking about.
I, I don't know how we're going to do.
Looking at highway.
Less with less.
Highway department.
More, or more with less.
Seminars. We have five hundred dollars in twenty twenty three, we use sixty five dollars. In twenty four, we had a thousand dollars, we didn't use any.
So we don't send anybody to C D L?
I'm just naming off the numbers. Did we have eleven thousand in, in twenty five, we didn't use any. So. Are we gonna use it all this year is what I guess my question would be. Cause we're gonna start off at eleven thousand dollars again and we've already had half of that. You know what I mean? I'm looking at ways to help you, the stuff that we, we can. Cut away at this point and save someplace else. It, it's moving the budget around.
I can do that myself.
Well, I know, but the trouble is when Dana asked for a cut down in or ten percent or twenty percent, we came back with the exact same budget. That the budget committee had the other night and it doesn't look like anybody took any thought whatsoever in trying to cut it down.
You were at that meeting, Jim.
I know I was, that's what I said. But I'm talking about the message that Dana sent after that meeting, when he looked at the money on the budget, the increase and he asked to be cut down ten or twenty percent. And nobody did any, I'm not, we need work on our roads. I understand that. But we also have residents in town that need to be able to survive. And if you have people, I'm, I'm seventy six. I'm just lucky enough that I have enough income to pay my taxes. There's a lot of people my age that are probably gonna be moving out of town period because they can't afford their taxes. And we have to look at that. I mean, we're here for you and for everybody in this room. But we're also represent the whole town of Andover residents, not just certain groups. That's why we have to be a little frugal at this point.
What do you got, Charlie?
No, I got, I got six seventy one. Full cuts.
Six seventy one if you do want to. If you.
Oh, just.
Highway supervisor wages, what's that number?
Eighty seven, one twenty five.
Eighty seven, one twenty five for the highway supervisor.
One eight hundred, ten thousand, that's big cut is this gravel, I got, I got twenty five thousand.
You go.
For the.
Standing gravel down to.
Twenty five thousand.
Down to twenty five thousand dollars for standing gravel one?
Correct.
I, I don't, that's completely.
For, um, H D labor, I got two fifty. I got, uh. We need is it equipment, forty? I got thirty for fuel. Cost of fuel is lower right now than it's been in a while.
Doing bad, three more trucks.
We won't be able to drive them, so it's okay.
Um, H D projects, I've got thirty five.
We won't have guys to drive them because they're gonna quit.
Uh, we can be a fetus or we can try to work this out.
Okay, so.
I mean, we wanted roads, then we want to be black hole, I guess.
Well, the investors.
So how do you get the two fifty?
So that H D labor?
Just a playwork.
Cause I looked at budget, the budget last year was two fifty, two forty five. One forty, fifty three the year before, ninety two the year before, so I added a little increase there. I don't know, I mean, so, I mean, the six seventy one you can come up from. We're just, first shot at it. Trying to make some effort here. I mean, yeah, you could add back in another thirty across all these lines somewhere, spread it out. And you're at seven hundred.
Yeah, well, the most good fact, we were less was signing up for you.
Is, is the, the line.
Actually, the equipment. Not at sixty five, but it's on the muster amount.
Calcium and peroxide.
Down to seven thirty.
Yes, it's calcium.
It's calcium.
That's, that's gonna get changed.
I got uniforms that dropped down to six thousand.
We have a contract for that.
So. What if, um. What if we, the board, ask. Don and Jeremy to go back and say, okay, if we, if the number is seven hundred, a number out of the air.
Right.
How will this be distributed? Instead of us going through a line by line.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's weird. I think that's the approach.
Yeah, I know this is hard because I've sat in those seats and I haven't do it myself. But we have limited resources. To Charles, uh. Uh, when I've worked in business, you have limited resources and they said, this is all you're gonna get. And then we say, okay, well then, you know, I take a haircut on everything. Everything goes down three percent or everything goes down five percent, picks another number. Or we say, you know, if we do take a leasing piece out. And say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna advocate for that. There's eighty thousand right there. I guess the standard seven thirty. Will reduce a little bit in the maintenance and equipment, reduce a little bit projects, how will we make up that other thirty thousand dollars? We'd look to you, cause that's the bottom line.
Right.
But I, I don't want us to get into the, into the weeds, whoever said that, but. We just. Let's see, I mean, we gotta go with an eight hundred thousand dollar number. Sure, Tom, you had your handle?
I got nothing. The only thing I think that, that may go off a little bit would be the equipment rental. If they do rent a roller. You know, if they're out doing the tape roads, they should be renting a rollers and I don't see three thousand dollars as being enough money for that.
No, we had, that was out there all summer that we didn't even use and pay rent, so what the hell does.
I mean, I think you had talked about that, that number on the bottom is, as far as, you know, whether we're including the lease or not. Because if we're zeroing out the lease line and saying we're in a CRF, then that number's gotta reflect that.
You, you gotta do it both ways, cause we're gonna have a meeting on the thirteen.
Right.
See which way we're gonna do this.
So, 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 but if we, if we replenish the CRF for paving, does that show on this budget for under?
No, cause that's a separate thing.
So the leasing going under a CRF doesn't show up here either?
Well, but leasing we have always carried on the highway budget.
In twenty seven, once town approves it, passed the warrant out.
Right, but just.
It'll show up in twenty six.
But the point is, we're spending the money for leasing vehicles for the highway department. So whether we're showing it here or a CRF. The bottom, again, back to the bottom line, the amount we're spending for the highway department's gotta be the same.
No, that's, that's.
No, it's not true. It's not true. Because you're not showing your pavement as part of this either. All the stuff in the CRF is a separate warrant article which shows somewhere else.
I understand that, but it's not about where it shows. What I'm saying is what the town pays.
It's absolutely about where it shows because the, the legislative body votes on the operating budget. It's a bottom line budget that covers all the departments and then they also separately vote on individual CRF.
I understand what they vote on. Don, if we spend five thousand dollars, five hundred thousand, five million dollars for a town, okay?
But they.
And, and.
Five different.
Ways, okay. If we spend five million dollars and we have a ten thousand people in town, everybody's got. Five thousand dollars, right? If we spend five million, five hundred thousand dollars, everybody's gotta spend that much more.
But that's.
Okay, doesn't matter whether we call it a CRF.
It absolutely matters because they're voting on different budgets, Charlie. So they're voting on operating budget first. And then they have a CRF that they vote on and they don't have to accept it.
I'm not talking about a vote on, I'm talking about what they pay out of their pocket.
And that's up to the select board to talk to the legislative body at the town meeting and say, look, this is our operating budget. And they can go default on it if they want.
So. So the point is that this is the operating budget, separate from the CRFs. If individual CRFs or the larger CRFs is voted down, that just means no roadwork. We knew as an asphalt and.
The paving CRF you're talking about, paving project.
None of that happens.
Right.
We still, you're right, we still operate to an overall bottom line.
Right.
Portion of which is operating, portion of which is CRFs and ETFs.
And that bottom line.
But the part that.
Taxpayers.
That we ask the department heads and town administrator to focus on is this operating cost.
Right.
So, but if we wanna move some of them around, that's fine, it just means that the town, the town says, you know what, we don't want to do. Point is, if we pull a line on them out by saying there's a CRF. Then the budget has to reflect that much less.
Correct.
That, that's what I'm saying. So, yes, it comes out as a CRF, the town votes on it separately. But it's, it's still money that taxpayers are paying.
Correct.
And so, if our budget is seven fifty with.
They vote to pay on it, but that's the thing.
If our budget is seven fifty with a lease line, a lease line in here for equipment. And pull that fifty out, then it's gotta be seven hundred.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So does this equipment lease line only go for our leased. Uh, to see these tobacco.
Correct.
Is that all this is? All right, well, I'm just making sure we aren't leasing, cause we do have a separate rental line.
Yes.
But we're not leasing, okay. So yes, this goes back to the point then, if. If on the twentieth, we say, our proposal is to take the bridge funds. Pay down these things, this eighty thousand goes to CRF.
Right.
We have a separate CRF, a forty thousand dollars a year. For the freight line, forty thousand plus change. And we've also paid down the majority of the F six hundred. Yeah, that's what we.
That one on highway lease amount is gonna be remaining after we pay the.
Just.
After we spend the hundred sixty four.
Then we would, if we take that approach, then every year we would be going back to either for the lease amount. Or. Our, our warrant article could be for the total amount in a non-lapsing of which we're going to, we could have. Put out the payment schedule, say we're gonna take from this forty thousand or the. Yeah, forty thousand years.
If we just take out the leasing, if we pay off the leasing till there's no leasing line, that's zero. That would bring us down to seven hundred and fifty six thousand dollars roughly.
Still about a twenty percent increase.
Yeah.
And we still have forty thousand dollars in leases we're paying to the CRF.
I'm just saying what's on, what's on my budget right here.
No, it actually takes down about seven thirty, but yeah.
I said roughly.
Yes.
But still don't think it's difficult to get under seven hundred.
Right.
Honestly.
No.
I think it could be done and, yes, it'll be people and that's a lot of our supervisor. And the guys driving the trucks, it will hurt. But everybody's gonna feel some pain on this, taxpayers alike. Let's see how we avoid it.
The, the whole economy out there right now is not good.
At all.
It's not good at all. And if people think they can go find another job, I'd say good luck to them. There's not, there's, work is slowing down and people are just not.
So, so, so Mr. Chairman, you're, you're advocating, advocating returning to.
The department head and the town administrator to get the number under seven hundred and come back to us.
Correct.
Am I allowed to get creative with?
Absolutely.
With, with what I put into the CRF punch, can I, can I take? Twenty thousand dollars out of sand and gravel and slap it into highway projects?
That defeats the purpose.
Right, so you're asking for.
Actually, it does.
Say that again, so.
So, so I can, I can get creative with the, the budget here because I can say. Uh, where's our? Uh.
Just take any number.
Just take anything.
I wanna take a specific line, since we are, since we're. It's not a line item budget, but we're, we're doing it a line item budget, so it's a bottom line budget. So if I take out of. HD projects, fifty thousand dollars, and I slide that into the CRF calls. Highway projects. And the, and the legislative body, on their own accord.
Yeah.
Have the warrant article, they say, yeah, we wanna raise, we wanna add fifty thousand dollars to the projects. And our operating budget looks great. You know, and I'm just repeating what, what Jim said earlier as far as.
But then at town meeting, Don, what they do is they stand up and they say, wait a second, in twenty twenty three, we had a budget for eighty five thousand dollars in that line. And in twenty twenty four, you had a budget for seventy thousand dollars from that line.
And in twenty twenty four, we had a budget for fifty seven thousand dollars and we said, yeah, we're, we're gonna just move that money right into the, uh.
I mean, I, I think you're missing the intent. Not about getting this thing passed in a vote. The intent is to not burden the taxpayers any further. That's the intent. It's not about how we want to banagel this, so that it's in a budget that comes in flat, and then we have fifteen CRFs to cover.
If if they don't pass it, don't pass it.
Or or it could be a single fifty thousand dollar CRF, or highway department small projects, something along those lines.
And that answers your question is, what does it get done? Well, in our operating budget, we we pay our guys. And we put people in the trucks. And that's that's our operating budget. I mean, that's it's labor and and gas. And everything else, if if we have a pool of money worth six hundred thousand dollars. Then the the highway supervisor can say, well.
I mean, that's sort of, that's sort of. I mean, because you would still, your labor number doesn't change if they're out there doing ditching. Or if they're out there mowing the sides of the road, or if they're plowing, those those are fixed numbers. And those are not counted as small projects. If we decide, you know what, we're gonna take that red line bridge, I'll now build a slot. And the highway department's going to do it, we're gonna do it for twenty thousand dollars. All right, that's a small project. But if we say, you know what, take that twenty thousand or the fifty thousand, put it into a CRF. We have anticipated an unanticipated small project, so we know. That actually, we don't know what's not what they're going to be for next year. But we, as a town, want to set aside under a CRF, fifty thousand dollars for it. We're not, we're not gonna put it operating. We want you, the town, to say, yeah, that makes sense to go ahead and do that. That's the same as the two hundred and eighty eight thousand or three hundred thousand, whatever number we say we want to do for road paving next year. It doesn't have to be fifteen different.
Right, it's not, it's not a flush fund that you could just pull from, right? It becomes something that's designated for projects. I'm a huge proponent of CRFs. I I I personally put forward a three or four new CRFs last year. For that exact reasoning, to help our cash flow.
Mark had a really good comment.
Good?
Yeah, you know, you were talking about, you you had your hand up when we talked about CRFs.
Well, I mean, I I I think from my perspective. That the the, one of the important things about difference between the CRF and the operating budget is the choice. You're giving the townspeople a choice. Do I want to raise my taxes so my. Roads can be like, so my police station can help or whatever. You're giving the legislative body the choice. Therefore, that is completely different, having it in the operating budget and having them having to swallow the whole operating thing. That's my perspective.
I mean, other thing with the operating budget, real quick, that we have to remember is, whatever the bottom line is, the operating budget is two, two million and change. The the legislative body cannot go in and say, we don't want five thousand dollars worth of cold patch. They haven't voted on the bottom line.
All or nothing.
And so they can, they can, and then it becomes the purview of the select board. To decide, okay, well, the legislative body only approved a two million dollar bottom line budget. Sorry, town administrator, you gotta go, because we need that ninety grand to go into the highway department. That's up to you guys at that point. So it doesn't matter. This this, the highway department budget could be two million dollars and the rest of the departments could be one dollar. Still a bottom line, however you, it doesn't matter.
But to Mark's point, if we if we populate this at seven hundred, and then we give the legislative body the choice. On all these other CRFs, at least we can get the bottom line operating budget through and then leave them the choice. And I think that's elegant.
But I was just told we weren't trying to get it through, we were just trying to get a budget, so.
We're trying to have at least impact on the tax.
I understand that. And and I'm leaving to Mark's point and Les' point. The more CRFs and warrant articles that the legislative body gets to vote on, the more control they have. And if the majority of the people are saying, yeah, we we get it, it sucks, but it costs money to pay five hole road. And it costs money to.
And if they look at all of these and they say no to the regular budget.
We're toast.
Then we're flat.
Yeah, we're we're in.
Then we're flat.
But then, but then it's up to the the select board to say, hey, legislative body. You guys had all this control at the meeting, we have no money, the town is broke, we have no police force, we have no highway department.
I think the thing we want to avoid is a default budget.
Right, right.
Alita?
Probably back in sixteen or seventeen, town body lowered the overall budget of every department by ten percent.
Yes, we did.
Marge and I had to, after town meeting, go through and lower every department by ten percent. That was the thing. And and the, um, having the capital reserves, you're earning a much higher interest. Without that money sitting in those accounts a long period of the year. Um, versus it being in a general budget over here at this.
It it would get to save whatever we don't have for the next year, yeah.
Yeah, so if they don't get to use it for whatever reason, it's still earning us a good penny money interest, like five percent or something. I mean, it's not outrageous, but it's a lot better than our department's interest. Just a thought.
And the other, again, from a cash flow standpoint. Capital reserve fund, a CRF, is like a checking account. It's it is actually cash on hand. This operating budget, we only get to collect half of this at the beginning of the year, and then the other half way later. And then we have to deal with crap like the tan and everything else, so. Keep that in mind, we're we're, well, and we're not gonna collect all this money either.
But we don't have to charge the CRFs, so it does come out of our.
But it's earmarked, it's it's tucked away.
No, I get that, I get that, but it still comes out of that tax collection piece. Well, it depends on when in the year, because we delayed four months on the costs this year.
It's just, again, from a cash flow management perspective, that's exactly what we did.
Well, I think that one of the things that, if we're looking at budgets, we're talking about numbers, but nobody's talking about. Actual figures of two hundred and something thousand dollars is still out there. People haven't paid their taxes. So, if we're gonna start jumping budgets way up like this, how many more people aren't gonna pay their taxes the next tax month?
That's why you maintain an unreal or a unassigned fund balance as well, which is currently around almost ten percent.
Exactly.
But it's to help float through some of those those areas as well as charge the CRFs.
So what's our number that we're putting forward for?
Well, yeah, what's the bottom line department, highway department budget number?
Jeff, you got a comment?
Um, I just feel like the proposal that Don brought up about warrant articles for particular projects that cost a certain amount. Hasn't been getting very much consideration and would address this question of things that could be eliminated. You guys have to make the decisions, if the town votes the budget too small. You'll say, these are the projects, this way the town gets to decide, I'd rather be the person making the decision. On whether like whole road gets paved is a priority this year.
Yeah, so I don't think we were discounting that. If it came across as, I don't think that's what it was meant, and then you go to the say.
So that's among the solutions they can.
Correct, that's a part of the, it's a part of putting this together and have. And recognize that they have, there's a operating budget. It gets to, it really does get to a capital side versus an operating side. And the operating side is this, this is the roads plowed, this keeps and ditches clean.
And that's kind of my point about the CRF is that if you have a CRF that you pull out, it's gotta be for a particular thing. Projects is a good example, right? Sand and gravel is not, right? I mean, so, I mean, this is an operating budget, there shouldn't really be projects in here. And so, I mean, they presented, this is what it's gonna cost to operate.
I I think we're all saying.
Fifty thousand in in projects out of here, I don't wanna.
Give us a project. Give us, please, give me, and Jeremy, what what's the, from from twenty twenty five's number, six hundred and twenty six thousand? Ten dollars. Do we have to stay flat with that? Can I go up a little bit from that?
No, I think we were saying seven hundred dollars as well.
I'd say seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred, okay.
That's about eleven percent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's just over. So we will, we will come back to you with an operating number of seven hundred K.
So we may go through another iteration of this. This is, I mean, so we'll do that, we'll look at it, we'll mash it up. And say, okay, that looks good, or maybe we need to bump it up, maybe we need to pay it up.
And and well, I, in that same conversation, the next time we talk about it, the operating budget, do I have to talk about CRFs? Or do I kind of just focus on operating budget?
Focus on operating budget, but if you have, if you have thoughts, if you, Jeremy, have thoughts, okay, here are the. Here are the top four projects that we think need to be done. Here, there's the five hundred thousand dollar CRFs that we think. You know, how we split those up? Yeah, it could be five individual CRFs, one for.
It's, I mean, it's a hundred K that, a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars to be exact, that I'm being told to. Well, cut out of the operating budget, so I I can do that in about five minutes. And then it mostly is gonna come from, I I mean, I can't count on the each equipment leasing. I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen next week at the the disposition of the bridge and highway grant money. But there's, there's eighty of the hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars that have been tasked with dealing with right now, um, you know.
We're saying the same thing, both.
Yeah.
We're on the same page, John. I also, but what I'd also like to see, you know, just. Because I think it's important, labor's already a big part of this, so we have a certain number of FTEs. We have, you know, we've got months on numbers, I'd love to know what the breakout is, okay? It's five FTEs plus supervisor, here's how much is regular labor time here, so much is anticipated over time. Because we know we'll have a certain.
I've actually got that.
You know, what are those numbers look like? What are the top four or five projects that you think we should list out? You make a proposal, we may come back and say, you know what, we think it should be settled, or we think you should only do these two. But that's, that's a part of the discussion, we need, we need something firm to discuss.
Realistically, I don't, I don't think we can say, speaking of paving, because that's really what we're talking about. We're we're not gonna be able to do a bridge next year. The highway department's probably never going to do a bridge again. Um, realistically, the highway department just is not equipped to do bridges. Fumbled our way through haul or a bridge, but different, different path. So basically, paving, and we contract out paving. So, again, most of our operating expenses are digging ditches, fixing couvers, and.
Patching.
And plowers now, in the winter. That's, that's basically what you're telling me that the highway department should do, and.
Well, I want it takes, I mean, that that gets also into the, what are the materials that go into that, just for, so there's.
Sand, gravel, maintenance, you know.
These things you've listed out here, but, okay, let's, what would happen if you just set it down? Where's, how does that affect these different lines? And again, that's a rough number.
Plus, you can take, if you cut that down to seven hundred thousand dollars, you can take some of the major projects that you're looking at and put those into a CRF. And have the town vote however they want.
But I do wanna make sure, again, the labor lines are something that we are addressing. Yeah, because I'd wanna continue to shake forth for our guys. Yeah, but we should also determine what's our policy going to be on when someone is hired, and when does that first. Kick in to this. You know, when I've been hired for different positions, it's normally, you don't get an expectation of any increase for the first year. Because I agree, I'm gonna work for you for this amount of money. And then at the end of that year, to your anniversary date, they say, okay, you did a great job, or, yeah, not doing so well, or whatever it is. And that's what those numbers are. Don, did you have your own?
I'm, I would like to say that you guys should have been doing this a month ago. Because the budget committee is about ready to wrap up, and now we have to go back and sit to all this stuff again.
And we had also, when you asked us to join many meetings, we said, no, we would like to meet with the departments first.
Right.
Then have them come to the budget committee. So you chose to have them meet with you ahead of time.
Because we, we have, we have said we need to keep, I would think you, we all should think very carefully about how we do this next year. This is, this is, thank you.
Anything else, John?
Uh, I'm still stuck at the seven hundred number for pulling out the eighty for leasing, right? I'm sorry. If it happens, yeah.
If we're pulling out the eighty for leasing, then let, and we're not putting the forty in leasing that's here, and it's in the CRF. I think that forty's gotta be reflected in the bottom line. So if the forty's going back in here.
Which forty?
That we are actually paying for leasing.
Twenty twenty seven, no.
We're paying it in twenty twenty six for just paying on a different line, that's all I'm saying. So the.
They may not approve the lease.
That's right.
Lease.
That's why we have to.
We we have, we have to go in front of the town for.
Has to show up on the CRF first.
We have to.
I I understand that. I'm just saying the budget should reflect that, that we're not paying a lease.
It will, the bottom line will, the bottom, the ultimate bottom line will, the highway department operating budget will not.
Correct, it'll be taken out of here. It's not, but it's not in that eighty thousand dollars yet, right?
Right, now we, we are paying eighty thousand dollars.
Our budget last year was six twenty six and included the eighty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, now you're saying we have a target of seven hundred and we're not including the eight hundred, eighty thousand dollars. That's a big jump.
Yes.
That's a big jump, that's a two hundred thousand dollar jump. Uh, no, no, it's the other one, hundred sixty thousand dollar jump, hundred sixty thousand dollar jump. That's a big jump. I'm saying it's a too big a jump. That's what I'm saying.
So you're saying it should be less than seven hundred thousand?
Yes.
You're saying it should actually be like flat?
So, like six sixty. That's what I'm saying.
Six twenty six, seven hundred. It's only a seventy four thousand dollars.
Okay.
But he's.
You're adding the eighty thousand dollars. But you're not putting that, you're taking the eighty thousand dollars out.
He's saying, subtract, yeah, subtract eighty six thousand from six twenty six, and then.
And your budget would have been, you know, five sixty.
Right. In twenty twenty plus.
Right, but you had the eighty in, so your budget.
That's how much we actually had to pay. So that's, that's some cost, that's gone. We're saying the forward cost, then we're not, we would pay that down, so it wouldn't be there. I I see what you're saying, there's still an increase in that of that.
Right, so if you're pulling the eighty thousand dollars out, because you're not, because we're gonna pay it off with this wonderful grant that we've got, okay? But we're still paying forty thousand dollars in leasing, the budget will reflect forty thousand dollars less, because next year, that forty thousand dollars is gonna be back in there.
Right, I see what you're saying, but let's, let's get it.
I just, just to entertain, so if I'm understanding, if I'm hearing you correctly. Looking at twenty twenty five budget number, six hundred and twenty six thousand, zero, one, zero. Subtract from that eighty thousand, three hundred ninety seven dollars, which is our leasing thing, but that's already down to five hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars. Multiply that by a ten percent increase, one point one, that.
Where's the ten percent increase?
That that's just, that was a number that was thrown out, made as far as like, the the select board's okay if we increase the budget by ten percent. Let's just, let's just say, that's the number I calculated, that would mean that our twenty twenty six operating budget would be. Six hundred thousand, one hundred and seventy four dollars and thirty cents. Using the logic of not counting the eighty thousand, three hundred ninety seven dollars in twenty twenty five. If I'm understanding you correctly, but clearly I'm not.
No, so, but regardless, I think we need.
Add that number and still we can, right?
Start with seven hundred, I think the, you know. I think a seven hundred thousand dollar is more explainable. Flat budget's more explainable to a town, but you know, it's a thing to do. Seven hundred thousand dollar, I think it's tolerable, if it's a percentage of what we spent three years here. Regardless what went into that, whichever line I was, because we've had other things that have changed as well, additional FTEs. We've had merit and the cost of living increases, multiple things that go into this.
Plus, we picked up two new people looking at.
When would we, next meeting, do I have?
And yes, because the, the output from the meeting on the thirteenth. When the board decides what we wanna present for the usage of the. Will definitely impact our operating budget next year. will definitely impact our operating budget next year. We may or may not have eighty thousand, three hundred ninety seven dollars worth of leasing.
One thing, Don, also is that, uh, we had that meeting with Joseph on All Road Bridge that needs to be a favor, finish that project off. I think we should do a CRF for that, you know, separately, because that's really.
We have a bridge CRF that we could re-energize.
Yeah, that, that's definitely.
Did that finish the paving over, not the bridge?
No.
It's just a base though?
Just a base code, we're getting the top covered off.
Alright, so it'll be paved. Alright, um, next item, special town meeting, uh, for Kierzach. The Kierzach Mountain Road, so we wanna.
So, we can, couple things, I haven't heard back yet from Matt whether or not, what we're discussing would trigger an appropriation, so, we're, as long as the special meeting doesn't have an appropriation, we're not, we're not trying to raise, new money in, in the fiscal year, then we can very easily have a special meeting where, you know, one to one thousand residents could come to the special meeting and vote on the warrant article. Um, if we do have a special meeting, I would, I would suggest having two warrant articles discussed at that special meeting. The first one would be to reclassify the section of Kierzach Mountain Road that was class six to fifth class.
Yeah.
The second warrant article would be to, that housekeeping item to formally adopt, potentially re-adopt, but we don't know. RSA thirty one thirty nine, which gives administrative enforcement authority to this level. Let's roll back to Kierzach Mountain Road, again, I'm waiting to hear back from Matt if that's considered an appropriation. I don't think it is, my read of it doesn't, see, we've, we've already done the work, we didn't raise, it didn't, we took it out of our twenty twenty five operating budget, it's, it's done, it's done, it's done. Um, so, we don't have to go back and ask for more money, which would be an appropriation. Um, there's a gray area of, if we're plowing up there, but we're still, again, we're not raising additional money in twenty twenty five fiscal year to, to plow that new section of Kierzach Mountain Road. So, I think we're okay, but I will get a formal judgment, but, other than that, there's no, holding a special meeting is, you, you have a warrant, you post it, and, uh, people come and they vote on the, on the articles.
What's the requirement for the number of people that have to show up to this?
If there is an appropriation, you have to have at least fifty percent of the registered voting. If you don't have appropriation, it can literally be one person. The, the people that are here.
I'll make sure, I sure will.
Is my understanding, I'm correct or wrong, to, um, activate all the special town meeting, do you have to get speed permission from, uh, the state superior court or anything like that, is that some connection? That's a difference, there, there is a section that would, but for this particular type of special meeting, no.
That's a public meeting?
It would, it would be, instead of a regular annual town meeting, it would be what is called a special town meeting, so it's a, it was a, the legislative body would come, vote on very specific warrant articles.
And just, I'm hearing, where would that be posted? Does the public's not sign?
We would at least post it in our two required places, but I could post it wherever else you want me to post it for you.
You know, with Slack, which suggests that probably even be posted, so people show up.
Last time we had public hearings, I posted it up at, um, Circle K, the bank. Post offices, town website.
Put it in the shopper.
Put it in shopper, so, we had, well.
Our electric sign out.
Yeah, and we didn't have that then.
Right.
So you will be posting a little beyond the official?
Maybe, not necessarily, we, I'm not, with that, again, we will be posting it in the two legally required positions.
Okay.
And likely, full above and beyond that, but.
Thank you, that's all I wanna know, I'm just.
Whatever's required by the law.
And the notification will include both warrant articles?
That's, that's up to the select board to decide if we wanna have two articles on the, on the warrant, um, again, this is, the, the legislative body could have a petition warrant article as well, if they, if there was a petition, you know, if they wanted to, the maple fridge comes to mind, but, um, this, this, we don't have any petitions for a special meeting from the legislative body, this is just the select board saying, hey, we would like to address this matter before going to town meeting. The other thing is, in the event we go to this special meeting and these articles fail, that doesn't preclude us from reintroducing the same articles at the regular annual town meeting. And again, if those articles fail at the regular town meeting, doesn't stop us from having another special meeting the day after. You, you know, and we can, there, there, it never.
As long as it's no money.
As long as there's no appropriation.
Yeah, okay, if, uh, this is bad, don't have to worry about this. If somebody wanted to petition something for your special meeting, do they need the twenty five signature?
I think it's actually fifty, I, I have to look at that again, but, but there is a. Yeah, I think it's a little different for a special meeting, but it's, it's the same idea.
Make, make the thing more, a good way to advertise it.
Okay, so, um, until we hear back from Matt on that, whether there's any appropriations of funds, then we should not go forward. Uh, for me, it's foolish to have a town meeting where you have to have fifty percent of the roofers.
Right, right.
So, I, I agree, it probably does not have any appropriations associated with it, but let's, let's cross the Ts, dot the Is. Um, I don't want the feeling as of the rest of the board, I would say do both warrant articles at the same time.
I, yeah, I agree.
Is that, makes sense?
My, my only hesitation with this whole thing is what Donna just brought up. Because I think we have very low attendance, I think it's highly likely that what we want to pass will pass. I don't see any problem with that, however, we could get some bizarre, um, warrant article in there, and most people in the town are not gonna attend this meeting. And before you know it, we've passed some kind of weird, that's what you, what you're yourself up to.
If, let's say we schedule the special meeting tonight, so we go out, we, we warn the articles, let's say we have the articles ready to go tonight, we publish it. It would be too late for any petition to end up at that special meeting, they would, if the residents wanted to tomorrow, have a petition go around, they would submit that petition for a special meeting, we would have a second special meeting. Like, this is, this is our special meeting, like, this hasn't even been advertised out to anything at this point, it's just, the deadline for.
When you talked about, just verify that, that other warrant articles can't get some guy here, right?
What risks do we have if we hold this off until our meeting on the twentieth?
The, the biggest.
Daily, you should have heard back from Matt.
Yeah, the biggest concern of waiting until March is.
No, 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 to make a decision next.
Oh, uh, I don't think there is any real risk unless we suddenly start getting tons of snow, um, we were talking earlier about the possibility of declaring it an emergency lane, um, to access the, snowmobile and hiking trails and stuff up there, that's a creative workaround potentially, but, um, I think we should address it formally.
Did you already have the conversation with Matt to initially about all this?
I had numerous conversations with that.
And but part of back to just some of the nuances of what's considered appropriation of funds, that's all. I mean, his initial read on it was likewise that, yeah, probably have about seven hundred people there.
Right.
Um, but, I, we wanted to get just a little more clarification on that, please.
Yeah, I, well, so Matt currently has videos of the recordings of the original time when it was, be, before I started working for you, when the planning board, I believe, came in with the letter that, that the board signed, or filling. And then, and then the subsequent meeting when Mark Stetson was here, he's, he's reviewing those and what was said, and then, just the intent, I've sent him all my correspondence with Cole, um, he's, he's got, he's got everything at this point, so.
Okay, great, and also we can hear from Jesse, do you have?
Just wanna make sure, are, is, is this special meeting also restricted from people bringing a motion from the floor at random?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Yes, there's no other business at that meeting.
It's a special, special eating.
It would be a very focused.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Okay.
Is there, is there any limit on the, um, does it have to be a certain timeframe away from the annual town meeting, from when a special meeting can be?
No, sir, it does not.
Alright, now let's move on to random, let's see here, uh, with, to Sarat property, private road. So, where do we start?
We talked about having, uh, plans to, that I, that we can look at. Uh, I was not that neat. That's how we left it, we were gonna have some plans, because we were just, people were just, oh, well, I'm here, I'm here, and, and you said we're gonna have some, plans so that we can know what we're looking at.
Of course they have the plans.
I guess the question I have is, what, you, you have been talking to each other, what have you come up with?
Nothing.
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 So, I've got some thoughts, but I'm not prepared to go over those thoughts. Because I'm, I, it hasn't been discussed at the, uh, conservation admission meeting, would have been, be inappropriate for me to represent them, without, uh, having any authority. Um, what we did discuss, the reason that I brought it to the select board last time, was the question of, uh, cutting trees on the town parcel, and that was resolved by talking with Andy during, uh, Randy during the meeting. And then afterwards, we went out into the parking lot, we chatted about some possibility solutions, and that got my mind jogging. And so, I'm, we've got it on the agenda for the conservation admission this month, uh, which is in a week's time on the twelfth. And I've invited Randy.
Can you give us an idea of what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's been what we, you don't know.
Last time I saw you.
Yeah, well, so, the, uh, the ideas that I have.
Yeah.
Are, um, so you said no to the, the swap of land.
I'm not giving you any of my land, no.
Right, right, I know, I'm, I'm not trying to convince you, but I'm trying to give them the idea of what we talked about in the parking.
I'm kinda upset because of what you did with the property down below, and you're not doing the same thing with us. And the reason why you're not doing the same thing with us, because you're saying it'll open up me up to be able to build on that property, which I can do anyway. So your reason for holding back and not separating that, splitting that property, give it to me, doesn't make any sense, Jesse.
I'm, I'm, you're, like, I'm answering the chair about the ideas that we have, I'm, I'm not like.
Yeah, but any idea you come up with doesn't make any sense, I'm not gonna give you.
That's right, I'm, I'm not, I'm not for.
We're in the same position we were two weeks ago, we don't have a plan in front of us to know what we're talking about, we don't have a proposition from either side as to how this gets resolved. I mean, we need some kind of formal proposal from you, from you, we need plans.
Yeah, I wanna split the property down with all the lots.
We need to see the, uh, the plan in front of us, you've got, it's been surveyed.
I've got all that, great, you need to have Dean and.
But one of the things that, you wanna buy the property, that actually, at this point, has to go in front of the town as a warrant article. Because we have lost the twenty one A. So. But if you can't resolve it between yourselves, then I recommend that you put a warrant article in front of the town, let the town resolve it.
How will we approach that, do we come to you?
You get a warrant article written up, I think, you know, I can help you write it up.
It would be called a petition warrant article, so you could, you could, you could compose the verbiage of the article. Go around, have a petition signed by the minimum twenty five residents. Then submit that before the deadline, which I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, you have months to go.
Okay.
Yeah, bring it to the select board, then they would have to place it onto the.
It's usually the first week in February, there, and February is the.
Thirty days, something like that.
Can you go on February first? What, it's usually like, maybe like the seventh or the eighth, something like that, or so.
I think the first, yeah, yeah, and you can try to get as close as you can, reach out and that'll be posted, we'll have it.
Okay, okay, that's easy. Okay, awesome, thank you.
And that way, if nobody can come to conclusion, the town will resolve it.
Yep.
Sit here while the sun.
But, um, management of that property is on, in the hands of the conservation commission, which is why, uh, we're gonna be discussing. And, um, I think the warrant article may need to ask for the, the rescinding of that management. Uh, because I don't know.
They didn't have loss, they didn't, when they, when the town said to sell the lost property, they did not ask for rescinding.
Right, but we endorsed that, we are not endorsing this so.
Why, why?
Well, I mean, I can't say, because we haven't actually talked about it, the plan wants to have the, okay.
It's just, um, excuse our frustration, we've been going around with this for twenty years. I can feel frustrated, uh, don't excuse it.
I, I hope, I hope come to the, the meeting next week, though, because that would really be helpful.
Do you have anything new?
I don't, because I am.
You're the one, I have to discuss this with.
Right, but I can't tell you what their view is, because we haven't discussed it.
Okay. Three years ago and said you were working on it, what happened? You never did anything, this was three years ago.
Okay.
I mean, Jess, what happened?
It, it just, it might be beneficial for you to go, you're not obligated to go to the conservation, it might be helpful for both of us.
To hash this out, is there no bylaws or like anything to go by, like how this works in other towns, or it's just what you want? Versus what we want.
In the end, it's up to the town.
Okay, okay, that's, you know, that goes to the town.
That's why the warrant.
Yeah.
Given a reach of resolution, we, we, we have to work with the conservation.
Or it still does.
Still does, but if that, if everybody's gonna agree. Recommends it, and it's like we're ready, and you guys are happy with it, and we can go to the town and say. This article, everybody, all the parties are in agreement on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a nice resolution, then, you know, no one's gonna stand up and say, why is this, why is that? It's not gonna have this, you know how meetings is, yeah, so if you guys can hash it out and have everybody in agreement. And I know, you know, right now it sounds hard, but it just makes it easier at town meetings.
Right, I understand.
And I'm talking with you outside of the meetings, doesn't really create anything. We need you to come to the meeting so that we can hash it out properly.
It's.
I don't wanna hash it all.
Okay.
I don't wanna go back, we're not gonna get anywhere, Jesse, I'm just gonna get upset and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that.
You just tell me what you're willing to offer, we'll go from there.
Okay, so this is a select board meeting. If you guys wanna bring that up with conservation or not, that's fine, but then the next process would be to do it a warrant article, either with or without the support of the. Construction.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, Lawrence Street Bridge Project.
Are you Andrew?
I am.
All right. So.
This is my first one of these, this has been fun.
Yeah, welcome, welcome.
They're not always fun. So this is Andrew Frankel, Andrew Frankel is an abutter on Lawrence Street and.
Sidewalk guy.
The sidewalk guy.
Sidewalk guy.
Yeah, yeah, see, we've been reading about it.
Yeah. Should I say why I'm here?
We'll give you, we'll give you the floor in just a second, so for the select word, I don't know how up to speed everybody was, if you were able to follow the emails from. Joseph, you met with Joseph, our engineer, um, Joseph and Betsy met with the butters on Lawrence Street. Overall, everything went really well, there was, at some point in the history of that project, the decision was made to put. Some bit stretch of sidewalk on Andrew's side of the street. Apparently, when that decision was made, Andrew was not present at that meeting, however, he was involved earlier in the process, but. He was a bit surprised when um, and or Joseph came and said, hey, here, here are the plans, here's what's going on, and. I'll turn it over to you now, sir.
Okay, so I went to the Lawrence Tree Bridge meeting two plus years ago. When we talked about changing it from a one lane bridge to a two lane bridge, and then we added a sidewalk, and we couldn't add the sidewalk without connecting it to another sidewalk. So we said, well, there's a sidewalk on the other side of the park that's like two hundred feet long, it literally goes to nowhere, but if we just went. From that side of the park, straight down over to the bridge where the current sidewalk already is on that side of the road. You have a sidewalk, and I think the town's gonna pay for that, and so there were some weird things, so that's what was discussed at the last meeting I was at. And then I was told, okay, that's what it's gonna be, my property now has no, isn't gonna be really involved in this at all. That it was just gonna be, they're gonna raise the road a little bit, they might move the drain originally, because the road is gonna be higher. But realistically, on my property, there was nothing, nothing was really gonna change. I got a call two weeks ago from the engineers, and they're like, hey, guys, we're gonna put a sidewalk in. But I wasn't inviting to any meetings, I wasn't given any notifications about any of this stuff going down. The last one I went to was the last meeting, I, I at that meeting, added myself to all of the town stuff, I get all the emails. I get everything, I got nothing about Lawrence Tree Bridge, but now there's a sidewalk going in. And I don't quite understand how that decision was made, because it's gonna affect parking. With people who park, and people park on my yard, and I don't care, but you're gonna cut off a chunk of parking. You're gonna have people crossing streets on a, a crosswalk now that wasn't there, on now it's gonna be a. Two lane bridge, and I can tell you, I know people, at the last meeting, were all upset when I brought it up, but people fly down that hill. And now that there's gonna be a two lane bridge there instead of one, they're gonna fly past the park. And there's no, there was no, I talked to the engineer about it, there was nothing about speed, he said we can't put in any speed bumps or anything like that to the plows, and I get that. But everything I asked him was basically like, the select board just said to do this. And I don't, I was, I wanted to be a part of this process, because I'm connected to this bridge. I even asked if we could put in access to the river and stuff, and make it like, since we own the park anyways, it would've been so cool, but. I don't know, I wanted to be a part of this, I got nothing, and now there's a sidewalk on my side of the road.
Yeah, and what is your house in relation to the park and the bridge, are you like between the?
You know where the park is?
Yes.
Yeah, the greenhouse across the street is.
I don't know the cause of that. It's, sorry, so you're, you're directly. And, and there is not currently an existing sidewalk there.
No, the sidewalk goes over the tunnel that goes under, the, under Lawrence Street. For the, for the rail trail.
Real true.
That's the sidewalk, that's the only, there's a little bit of sidewalk there, and it literally, after you get past the guardrails, it peters out and merges on the street and goes to nothing.
Yeah.
The sidewalk doesn't continue, it just vanishes, I actually have no idea why on earth thirty years ago when they put that tunnel in. There's even a sidewalk there, because it goes to nothing, goes to nowhere. But I understand why we wanted a sidewalk on the bridge, because we have kids who walk down the street, because you can't get buses up the hill. So it makes sense to put a sidewalk on that bridge, because it's for safety. So that kids are walking across the little sidewalk, so they were like, we're gonna add a sidewalk, great. But it was just gonna connect on that side of the road, it was literally just gonna go from the bridge to here, now there's a plan to bring it to the ski mountain? The ski, the Proctor ski area? So the sidewalk's gonna go to the Proctor ski area, but I don't know.
That true?
Why? That is what I, if I have lots of plans. Are walking. But there's like, like six people who walk. Over there, me included, I mean, I take that walk, and the sidewalk would be cool, but I, I just don't, it came out of nowhere.
It was, it was all a safety factor, was what I'm looking at, with the sidewalk being on the side that it is right now, there's, there would be no guardrail there for. Be able to have a, a guardrail there for the sidewalk for protection of anybody walking across that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so we decided to move it over to the other side, because that would take away that effect from down that hill and.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep, and that's the reason why we're gonna be on the side. Looking at those plans, it looks like they put the sidewalk on both sides of your driveway.
Yeah, the sidewalk continues.
My understanding, it was only gonna be on the, the side towards the bridge, and that the crosswalk was gonna be down, you know, kind of on an angle. Going across and going down that way.
It goes both sides of the driveway now, and it crosses where the current rain is.
Yeah.
And it literally crosses right directly to the.
I saw that, and I, I don't know why, like that, because my understanding was it was gonna be just a short piece on your property from the, where your driveway is. To the bridge.
I think from now on, when we have a meeting with Joseph and whoever. The whole board ought to be at that meeting, so we all know exactly what's going on, because I'm in the air. I read, I read a message from you about it, but we haven't heard anything about that bridge since it was pouring rain out there.
Yeah.
Right, well, sir, that was the time when we talked about it. Yeah, we had a, a select board meeting, and I, I should do it there. I've been to many of them, and they were years ago, actually, this bridge was supposed to start this summer, or the original plans. So it, so I've been going on for years, and then it just disappeared, and I got nothing, and I. I wanted to speak, because I'm connected to it, but I just, I got nothing, I don't know when the decision remained, I haven't been part of it, and. I would like to be.
So, what did Joseph, did, did you guys come to any decision or?
Yeah, come to this meeting. He pretty much said, you can't do anything.
Thank you.
Unless you say so. So this is the plan that they have, that, that you have agreed to. And that's why, let, let me ask you something, that's why they're, they're, they're already, they're making offers, they're telling me they're gonna offer me. Money for the, the easement.
So, so let me ask you, what, and I'll send you to this, what would you ideally like, knowing that. They want to put a sidewalk in. Knowing that they do put a sidewalk, probably you need some, a little bit of money for future rights and all that. What, but just generally, what would you like, what would make you happy?
So I, I didn't think about the safety thing about coming down the hill in that curve, that makes logical sense. So with that, I'm thinking about it now, it would make more sense to leave the sidewalk on that side of the road.
When you said that side.
On my side.
On your side, okay, yep. I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yeah, on my side of the road.
Right.
Um, I just wanna know that the, the other impacts are gonna be taken care of, like, so, you know, people park there for, for all sorts of things. There's baseball, there's soccer season, there's to Fourth of July stuff, there's tons of stuff that happen to the.
Which is a really bad idea, if I may jump in, parking on both sides of that street at the same time with two-way traffic is a bad idea. And that losing the parking on your side of the street will actually be a public safety improvement. And, and you, and you're only gonna lose like maybe three cars on that side, right between the end of, of the Stonehouse Road and your driveway.
So I also.
Only three or four parking.
I have had people park in the stupidest ways.
Yeah, people.
Fourth of July, people can be real, they'll be up on that sidewalk.
Soccer games, the, the, the Boswen Thunder soccer team plays up here now, it's a travels team. And they had a huge game, and I had to go find somebody who parked in front of my mailbox, because the mail guy came by. And literally couldn't deliver mail, luckily I happened to be there, and he's like, I can't, like, if, if I can't pull up to the mailbox, like, what am I gonna do?
One of the advantages will be that they will have to deal with the curving.
Six inch curve.
There'd be a six inch curve, they'll have to deal with that, and or we could post signs, no parking.
Right, so go, go on with what we're making.
Anyway, sorry.
So, I mean, I just want, I just wanna be a part of this process, and I wanna be able to, to hear that, because I didn't know about that.
Right.
The safety thing, that makes sense to me, I also, are we paying for this sidewalk to go up to the Proctor ski thing? Because we're, I feel like part of, okay, so these are things that I didn't know, that I'm like, originally, we were gonna pay for the sidewalk. Which, you know, to, I know to pay for roads is like a million dollars a mile, so some really ridiculous number. So I just, you know, I didn't know these things, because in the last conversation we had, it was, oh, the government will pay for the bridge. But we have to pay for the sidewalk that connects it to something.
Yeah.
So these things also kind of came through, and I was just thinking about, like, even my mailbox is on the corner of my driveway, and when they deliver the mail, they just drive up and drop it in. You're gonna put a six inch curb there, is he gonna have to get out to walk the mail to my one mailbox, like, I mean, I don't. I don't know my feelings, but I kinda feel like a dick. And we can go to the car to walk.
I, I think I saw on the plans, actually, they have to relocate the mailbox.
Yes, I could see that.
So, I mean, at least. I, I don't know.
Cause I'll have a curb on both.
But we'll make sure you're involved in where that gets, where that gets. So I think, I think, I, I haven't had a lot of participation in this, I know Roland's had some.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think there've been a lot of formal meetings, so it's not like you've been left out of attention, okay? Uh, I think we hear you, we can make sure that you're included in whatever meetings go forward. Um, if you have more thoughts, I'm sure that, you know, we'd love to hear them. Um, yeah. You want no parking signs, I'm sure we can arrange for no parking signs if you want.
There, I know that area better than probably anyone else in this room, with the, there's like drop offs on both sides and all this stuff. And I did ask questions about, oh, you're putting a sidewalk on this side where it drops ten feet, like, what are you talking about? So I did get other answers from Joseph, about how they were gonna do that and whatever, and they're gonna put up a fence along where they're gonna put a block. So you can't step off of the ten foot drop and all this other stuff, but it just was, it was very surprising.
Yeah, because Joseph did a lot of work on his own, and, and you know, it hasn't, it's not like we've had meetings all along.
Okay, well, when, when the woman called, I literally was like, no, you're reading the map upside down. Because on my understanding, I tried to be a part of this, and it was just surprise, it was surprise, no, we're actually doing this totally different thing, the layout's all different.
But honestly, that, that bridge, if they, if they kept and built it with a sidewalk to the east side. That road would have been moved over further, closer to your property as well. Um, to keep that width that they needed and the distance, you know, to have double lanes and the sidewalk. So they moved, they moved the road, they shifted the road a little bit, so they can put the sidewalk in, so it's a little bit.
Also, I'm, I'm really curious to see how this is gonna go down, because right as soon as you get to the other side of the bridge, the road is in a.
Yes.
Hole.
Yep.
So I know that they're talking to Kathy on the corner about moving her hill and other stuff, and then cutting into the hill on the other side. I just not, I wasn't sure how they were gonna throw in an extra five foot sidewalk where they're already trying to squeeze a road. It just, I'm just curious how this is gonna work.
You do wonderful things with retaining walls.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of bricks and things.
Yeah.
So, okay, I, I would just love to be involved if there are other meetings.
Sorry.
Who's responsible for snow clearance on these new sidewalks, just wants to make sure.
They said that they would maintain.
Right.
They send one.
Yeah, they don't have a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll go from his house all the way up to.
Yeah. Down, down that old street, actually.
Yeah.
And just put the board, I'll let Joseph know that Andrew came in and talked to us, and that any, if there's any other further communication that, you know, we'll.
Planning, meetings, et cetera, yeah, he should be included, all of the residents should be included.
Yeah.
Well, they haven't, they've been going on. Yeah, years ago, we all got letters in the mail, and there were things posted, and we cannot tell those meetings, I, I met you guys at the bridge at one point.
That's right.
Where we were out there just chatting about it and.
In the rain.
Looking the rain. In the rain, yeah, so, I mean, I've been, I tried to go to as many of them as I could, but then they just stopped. And that was where I was like, I, this was, all of a sudden, it's not happening this summer, I didn't hear any updates, I didn't come to these meetings. You're welcome all the time.
You gotta stick around. That would be really fun.
Okay, moving on to health officer and the nomination form.
Everybody is already, or we have enough signatures on this, so unless there was any further discussion, I think we can move on.
Okay, sure.
Good.
Transfer station, uh, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, new hire.
So, real quick, it's actually not strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, although we do have plenty of those, that is actually solid waste operator training. So, I am a, a recent grad, uh, happy to say that I am now. Still operator level two at the Anover Transfer Station, and I've already done my continuing education for twenty twenty-five, so I'm good to go. Um, and then, more importantly, we did bring on a new employee down there, his name is Jason Snyder. Um, I've been speaking with Dana about it a little bit, and he's, you know, typical part timer down there, uh. Wednesday and Saturday, you'll see him down there, um, seems like a really, really nice guy, he's, he's a, he's a strongback. And it seems like a hard worker, so his first day was on Wednesday, so if you see him down there, uh, be sure to say hi and introduce yourselves, um, but.
Snyder or Schneider?
Snyder, S N Y D E R, he lives just up the road in Wilmette, and um. Yeah, he, he works on his family farm, does construction, he's, he's kind of a jack of all trades type of guy, so I think it should be a nice, nice addition up there.
Well, ho- hopefully Manchester removal project coming up there.
Good, so um, a couple of weeks back, we had dumpster number one hauled off, built and hauled. Uh, and then because of a little bit of a, uh. Typo on, on the dumpster depot side of things, the second dumpster was hauled off today, so that one's gone. As far as managing the pile from turning into Mount Mastro's more, again, um. What we're doing on, when the new C and D containers come in, put a couple in the bottom. C and D comes in on top, C and D, construction and demolition debris, uh, and then we cap those with more mattresses, so they're going out primarily in C and D. We are also unbeknownst to the other operators at the transfer station, typically on Thursday morning, um. Myself, Cody, or Chris, or Cody, Chris, or just Cody, just Chris, somebody. Has been uh, sneaking a couple into the fresh uh, MSW trailer, so. Um, our operators down there that work to booth during the day, during, during the operating hours. It's really difficult to get mattresses into the MSW trailer, it's just, it's.
Time consuming.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's a bit of a, even, even when the trailer's empty, it's a bit of a, you know, you, you gotta spend a little time with it, so maybe with Jason now. During the day, we might be able to get some into the MSW trailer, but for now, it's, it's much. More under control, we're, we're staying on top of it.
Piles going down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Going down.
The pile is, there's probably about three or four, you know, it kinda ebbs and flows, so it's just kind of a constant, three or four. There, nothing like it was, um.
Good.
The, the next challenge that we're up against right now, um, are the pallets, we have. A, a huge amount of pallets down there that, that I need to figure out a way to, to deal with. I don't know if we can crunch those up and get them into, you know, a separate C and D dumpster, but um, that has just gotten wild out of control.
And people pick those up in the winter for burning?
Not, not nearly enough, it's, they come in faster than they.
Yeah, I'm thinking the wood stove or the wood fire boilers up.
There's not, there's not really that much wood in a pallet.
Is there a way to recycle them?
Well, they're full of nails.
Well, yes, if we could find someone that was interested in taking them, there are companies that do take them, but most of those are out of Massachusetts.
No chance.
Something pertinent, um, people come to Beltate's all the time, asking for pallets, and they have a big stock of them. They're very excited and relieved that they can get them, so maybe posting, posting to like some way that.
There was a sign right there, it says, free clean.
I'm thinking maybe on the Friends of Anover Facebook page, just letting people know that's, because I would, when we're running low, I never think, oh, you can go over to the transfer station. This is the first I hear that you guys have some, and you know, a lot of people, they just wanna use it to burn, or maybe to mess around with wood, they, they got all sorts of reasons.
Are they clean, are they nice?
Yeah.
A lot of them are broken, and they got.
It started off as, you know, like, clean pallets only, but then that, it became a. Just a typical resource, you know, a lack of resources, we didn't have Deb or Al or, you know, Roland or whoever.
Monitoring them.
So, and it just.
Really abused, um.
Yeah. So that's the challenge, and then I'm also working with Mantrycycles to get the, what is truly, um. A low-grade hazardous waste situation that we have on our hands down there, we, we cannot use any of that oil. Because it, it's mixed with unknown quantities of others, other fluids, we, we have no idea, so it's not, it's not.
Pleaseable.
Waste oil, it's, it's.
It's waste.
It's actual, so, that, that's a process, and um. Most likely, safety clean's gonna come in and uh, take care of that for us, but I believe you guys focus on that.
Thank you.
What happened with the C and D commercial limitations on that dumpsters?
I got scared, to be honest with you, sir, um, after doing my SWAT training. We should not be taking commercial waste, period, it's not in our operating permit, we, we. We're in violation of that every time that Proctor comes in, every time that contractor comes in, we're, we're violation of that, and. We've, it's, again, it's another problem that is, is unwieldy. It's, again, it's another problem that is, is unwieldy and out of control and, um. Getting, again, getting changed up down there and getting in front of that will certainly help, but, uh, as of the moment, we're still. Taking, I had, I had a contractor, I won't name any names, but had a contractor call me up and said, hey, uh. You used to keep that C and D dumpster pulled up nice and tight. It was great cause I could just back my trailer up and dump it right in. And I wanted to tell that gentleman that, uh, well, yeah, we, we, we want you to feel a little pain because we, we don't wanna be taking your, taking your crap, but, uh. It's, it's a problem.
Until we start adjusting our rates.
Well, that's.
To make it so a person wants to grab the rent, the trailer at their side instead of what they're doing now, the amount they're paying, we're gonna still have it.
Yeah, we're, we're subsidizing contractors in, in Andover.
I thought we were gonna post it though and say no more.
I know, and I, again, I. There's. Short of, I, I can't do that to the workers down there. It, it will take literal. Like enforcement action. It will take someone days of standing down there for a whole shift to, to actually stop that. It, it, it gets violent. I mean, it, it gets borderline violent down there.
That much?
Yeah. It's, well.
C and D guys?
Yes and no. The, there's only about a half a dozen, only, you know, only a half a dozen or so contractors that are coming in, but, but these guys are. They're, they're sketchy.
The presumption of privilege is palpable.
It's, it's, it's fierce and, uh, I've been spending a lot of my Saturdays, um, a lot of my Saturday days down there. And also a decent portion of my Wednesdays down there, just observing and, and getting. Getting my hands around the stuff and of all the problems that I've identified down there, that's lower on the list of. You know, if the DES came in right now, we would be in big trouble with the oil. Um, you know, they wouldn't shut us down per se, but we would be mandated to clean it up. I would rather get ahead of that and get that cleaned up before the DS comes in and, you know. Forces us to take.
But following that, what would you say there are like probably six different founders? I'm sure there are more, but that's, those are the big. What precludes us and maybe it's after, after we give the waste oil or the waste. Fluid, fluids, um. Sending a letter saying cease and desist?
Right.
Um, you're.
So I have some ideas.
If it's found that you're continuing to use signs of the.
Yeah, no, I, I have some ideas on that as far as. I really think we should have an annual dump, uh, permit payment and a separate annual beach permit payment. But just the dump permit and then give the commercial guys an opportunity, but we would have to update our, um, operating plan first, which is, which is a. Administrative thing. Al's already done some work on it, um, but update our administrative plan, get that, or our operational plan, get that. Get that squared away. If we, if we want to even entertain, you know, handling commercial waste. Commercial C and D specifically, uh, that's an option or like you say, have, have a. Basically a, a blacklist of, of names and identified people that when these guys come in, we know, hey. You know, not to speak on less, but if Les was coming in as a contractor, like, hey, you know.
I'm retired. I don't do that anymore.
But.
You got a good time.
No, I'm saying not. Don't put the onus so much on the workers there, but we as the board or. Through the town minister, we sent a letter to X Y Z contractors saying it's understood that you've been using our. Transfer stations or your C and D disposal, that's no longer acceptable. Um. That's why I let you continue.
That might provoke something.
What's that?
That might provoke something.
Gonna do it either way.
Yeah, but it might make someone then come down an extra Wednesday after they received the. You know, make this big promotion there out of the blue, unexpected, because they got this ladder back at the, you know.
But if we can quote Carces or Quorones.
I mean, I think maybe this supposedly these people are paying something, whatever small, diminutive amount it is. If we can just have a pink thing for everybody that comes in and pays out, you give them this little slip that says, starting next date, no more commercial C and D.
Right.
You know?
The other thing.
By RSA whatever, we can no longer, sorry, as of December first, we can no longer accept any commercial C and D by RSA whatever, whatever.
Also, there should be on every one of those slips that are filled out when people pay in there, there should be a name on it. Not cash. This should be an actual name filled out on that thing. That's not.
I agree. And again, that's, that's some administrative changes that we need to do down there, so. Right now, the, the good news is, is that other than the volume and the number of dumpsters leaving, coming and going. We're, we're not losing money at the transfer station. We're still keeping our heads. You know, at water level where, where we need to be, so that. That piece of is, is okay. It's not ideal, but it's okay.
Mark, yes, um.
This might be pie in the sky, but is there any way you could charge for Al disposals?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Are you doing that already?
Not for me.
Look at all of the, okay, so cause they're not ranked.
Fires, electronics, um.
You already look at some of these pallets. Because if they say sack creed on them, then they belong to Beltays.
Yeah, there are certain pallets that people.
And Beltays, thirty-five dollar deposit on any one of those.
Yeah, and they can actually, you can get a return on that.
Oh, really? Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, the customers are tall.
Man, if, if you're digging through my pile of pallets, you gotta, you gotta stack them back up deep though.
All right, that's nice.
Good.
All right, next item, appointment of Jessica Rand to the R G C. To, was there a form?
There's no form. If, uh, I'll let Roland take this one. It's.
Yeah, I, I'm on the Lake Region Planning Commission. The, the rule for two people, Donna was on it and she resigned from it. Um, and I believe that having Jessica and being part of the land use board and everything there, she'd be able to. Work with Lake Region Planning Commission a lot closer than anybody else can, you know, for our community. Um, and there's a lot of things that the planning board needs that she can do during the daytime. Uh, with the Lake Region Planning Commission, especially helping with the master plan and some other.
Maybe really good resources for her, and then it turned to resource for us.
That's right.
All right, so we need nomination, economic nomination, we, uh, I make a motion, we nominate her to.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I sort of ask him? It'd be great to have, uh, one of you representatives come to, uh, conservation commission meeting occasionally. Just to, because we, we really would like to know more about what, you know, what is going on. There are opportunities to help with the conservation. So, yeah. We'll, we'll chat to Justin. Unless you, your.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm just thinking about this thing that is more about, uh, the town planning and, and stuff like that. There's really not much conservation in, in with that, uh. That I see, but I, you know, I'll, I'll look into it.
We, we've benefited a lot in the past from connection to the Lake Region Planning Commission and, um, you know, like. We have a lot of maps done by them and things, so. There's lots of resources, lots of parts of communities.
It doesn't hurt for somebody to go to, I used to go to their meetings all the time, but when I stopped, then, um, Peko started going.
We're not asking for a report every, you know, we're just maybe, uh. We're only, yeah, we don't need to have a meeting, just like quarterly, you know, that'd be fantastic.
All right. Tachrome sign permit for the house, so the, the community hub is asked for, um. They have an existing sign that's out there for the hub they have hanging on Caldwell Banker, which is time worse. Um, the Tachrome is a resident or a leased, uh, space down the basement, basically. Um, and they have a sign in the back, but it's not really seen from the roof, so I wanted to know if they could put something out there. There'd be six points, six square feet. Thirty inches high by twenty-five inches wide, so basically the same with this, the Caldwell Banker one, a little bit higher. I think they had some four H students. Um. Come up with a design on it, it's double sided, it's not lighted, uh, it's a wrought iron frame with a wooden insert. So I'm gonna.
And it's ground mounted, it's, it's not.
It's ground mounted?
It's ground mounted, it's not.
Pictures I saw of it out front out there, it looks really good.
So I'm gonna recuse myself since I'm the treasurer of the hub, so. Discuss among yourselves.
Get out of all the. Cemeteries.
I, I believe we should do this.
Yeah, I do too. I, I know picture looked fine. I mean, that's a small sign.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
It's gonna get buried in the snowbank.
I make the motion that we allow the sign.
That's second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we wanna meet on the first, the first day of, um.
Signatures.
Not just.
I don't know, you're not there yet, all right, yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, you know, A, sort of discuss the, the remaining scheduled meetings in twenty twenty five. We have three left, you know, after this one, if this ever ends tonight, uh.
We have, we have going on next.
Three, three more regular meetings left in twenty twenty five, so definitely keep that in the back of your mind. We've already.
Four now.
We've added a four, yep, um, special ones. And then, yeah, the, if we're gonna stay on the Thursday, first and third Thursday schedule, January first, twenty twenty six is the first Thursday. Of January, which also happens to be the first Thursday in the year twenty twenty six, so. That's why I wanna put that on the agenda for discussion and just.
I think we can.
Fan ahead a little bit.
We can do the third and the fourth Thursdays.
Uh, which, what days that fall on the first?
January first, I know, but what day?
So what if we, yeah, so what if we go through the, uh, second, the fourth?
Second and fourth would mean that we get.
In, in, uh.
Eighth and the twenty-second.
What day is it?
Thursday.
So our, our, our last meeting in twenty twenty five is currently scheduled for December eighteenth. The last Thursday of December is actually Christmas Day, so. Practically the last Thursday in December is the eighteenth. If we went to the second Thursday in January, that would put us out to January eighth.
Okay.
Which is a, you know, basically what we experienced this meeting about three, three weeks.
Yeah, I think it's not gonna do that because you've got your holidays that come right into that whole schedule right through there.
I'm not gonna be at the eighteenth.
The next one will be the eighteenth, right?
The next meeting in November will be the twen- well, the thirteenth next week and then the twentieth.
I'm talking about January. Oh, do you know?
The first meeting in December is the fourth. The second and final meeting of twenty twenty five will be on the eighteenth. And then the first meeting in twenty twenty six, sounds like we're gonna set it for the eighth.
Five days.
Sounds good. And where everybody gets to go home and have the holidays and the cake and the candy and the grandkids. Or some coal. Yeah. I gotta hold back out of that show.
Make sure pepper doesn't fall on Val's tongue.
I think we'll be good. It'll be the fifth and the nineteenth.
No, you just. And then we'll have Tommy.
Yeah.
Yep, a fire song.
And that's it.
All right.
All right, signatures?
Signatures.
All right, so, um, all these things that are on the list are fine, despite some concerns, but, um, then you got two that are not on the list.
Those were for discussion. Those are, those are, those signatures required.
Thank you, son.
So, I did too. Those guys. And, well, I know the, the high antenna one was just in case you guys had any questions.
Well, yeah, so the well intended, they didn't break anything out again. So actually what they do is, here's what they've done.
Oh, this, this one does need some.
Right, so they've got these, apparently these phases. And they're just building by the phase.
Yeah.
So it'd be helpful to add up. Uh, the phases, something we can reference? So.
The manner.
That's all that, that, you're not, not looking for a signature on that. So. Who are we looking at here? We're just looking at, so what they did, we asked for a breakdown in the oil, in the bill. These, what they did is to break these out like.
There's a sub.
So phase thirty-one.
Two different consultants.
What is that painting?
That's a breakdown.
Okay, clear point.
Right, that's what we asked.
Need a little narrative to go with that. Right, so if they could just describe to me, what phases, you know, there's a chart.
But the actual costs, it's forty-two hundred or forty-eight hundred, it was a self consultant. Yeah. I believe the other one is also a self consultant. That, um, I thought they said on the cover letter as well with that.
Two consultants in.
Yeah.
What was the question on the?
The, what was the geotechnical engineering report?
Doesn't really mean.
Like, yeah, what is this?
It's a straight line.
Right, I understand that, but it's not a. Invoice, is this, it's the.
Donna, is this an invoice for the?
I'm not sure what that one was, Christie. Uh. Oh, sure, blame me on Christie.
So I. Is that for the lease?
It's the.
Yes.
Oh, is that the, the freight line or lease?
Yeah, so there's no lease, it's just, uh.
It's the first.
It's the.
Yeah.
That's the money part of the lease.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll tell them.
Right, have we signed a lease?
Yes.
Yeah, we already.
Yeah, that's how we ordered the product.
And then, no, we signed a, a purchase order. Didn't sign the lease.
No, we actually signed.
You didn't get the permission to sign the lease, but, yeah, so technically you did not sign the lease. I.
But, but we all signed on the document, said they authorized, so I'm just idiot signing.
Right, I'd have seen the lease. So what do we sign in here?
That's the first lease payment.
Yeah.
That's the first payment for the, the big dump truck.
All right, the payment that they're asking for here, it's two hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's a big lease payment.
That's a whole trust.
Right.
That trust.
Right, I understand that, but there's nothing on you that says. Bill, the finance company's gonna give him that money and they're gonna repay that. What are we approving here?
There's nothing to be approved.
That's what I said, thank you. That's what I was saying, right? Information line, okay. That's what I thought.
Why signed that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Nope, we have a non-public.
I have trust fund signature, but I need to get some money from that.
That would be good, huh?
Three hundred something thousand. That we take out of the capital reserves and get into our business funds. I'll just pack them around and then pay our bill. Pretty self-explanatory.
Here's the releases from the CRF sleeping fees.
It re-inverts us. Yeah.
Put the money in, now we're taking it back out.
Yeah.
Wait as long as possible to get the optimum amount of interest rate.
And also wait as long as possible to put it in so we can.
I go for that, get that one at least.
Have a good night. Day night. Good night. He's signing above or below the line, Dean. I'm, I'm signing above my name.
Sorry, one of yours, Charlie said come out right.
I know, if you're signing above or below.
It doesn't matter, wherever you are. Just try to snare your name.
Hold it down. Well, not clear, could be where to sign. Well, there's no dotted line or so.
Below, okay, below for you left side, I mean, oh, sorry. Sorry, in the leg, sorry. Two, two thousand, people want to take this.
This one. You wanted the wrong one. This drives, this thirty-eight thousand, seven thirty-eight remaining after the disbursement?
Not tonight.
Pulling that out, that's what'll be left after the disbursement.